We're waiting for one more member to get here. So I think I'll just start with the certificates of appointment. I'm going to go down to the podium. And if Stephen Kenny and Kathy Rudisola are here, you could meet me there. Okay, let's go get those certificates and make it official. And I have glasses, so I can see today. So first, Stephen Kenny. Everybody here okay?
Yes.
Okay. Stephen Kenny is being appointed to the Raleigh Board of Adjustment as an alternate member. And we are very pleased to have you join us. This is a really important position, and we will keep you busy. So it is now official. There you go. Thank you. And Kathy Rudisola, you are going to be joining Steve on the Board of Adjustment. I'm not sure if you know what you signed up for, but when you said you would love to get involved in the community, I was really happy to nominate you for this position. So thank you for your service. Thank you for all you've done for Raleigh already.
Thanks very much.
So there you go. Thank you very much. We also have two proclamations. One is for Black History Month. I don't believe anybody is here to pick this up, is there? Okay, well, I will read this. Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to share the many historical and present contributions of African-Americans to our city, state, and country; and whereas African-Americans have played significant roles in the leadership of Raleigh's economic, cultural, spiritual, social, educational, and political development; and whereas the city of Raleigh celebrates Black History Month, recognizes the impact of the city's African-American community in helping to establish Raleigh as one of the best places to live, learn, work, and play in the country; and whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the rich history of a people who helped to build this country through neighborhood leadership and involvement, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities; and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of African-Americans and look to the future to build upon this heritage and continue to improve society that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore do I, Mary Ann Baldwin, Mayor of the City of Raleigh, North Carolina, do here proclaim February 2020 is Black History Month. Thank you very much. We also have a proclamation here for the League of Women Voters. Is Diana Nguyen here? Diane, are you going to come up?
Hello, former president's support members.
How many folks you have?
Like five.
Come on up. I don't know if anybody has gotten a picture of this, but... Very appropriate. Thank you, ladies. Okay, here we go. Whereas in 1920, the headquarters of the North Carolina Equal Suffrage Association was locating in Raleigh and advocating for the ratification of the 19th Amendment to grant women the right to vote. Wow. And whereas the women's suffrage movement led to the passage by Congress of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States in 1919, and was ratified by the states in 1920; and whereas the National Women's Suffrage Association dissolved to create the League of Women Voters of the United States for the purpose of educating voters and registering women to vote, with approximately 120,000 North Carolina women being registered to vote for the November 1920 election; and whereas National League of Voters was founded on February 14, 1920, and the League of Women Voters of Wake County was founded by local suffragists, and first met on September 27, 1920; and whereas women today constitute a majority vote in North Carolina and the United States... Woo-hoo. Okay, yeah. I like this part, too. Are running for office in greater numbers. And are more active in the election process than ever before in history; and whereas the city of Raleigh recognizes the historic impact of the 19th Amendment and the League of Women Voters on the civic life of women in our community, state, and in the nation. Now therefore do I, Mary Ann Baldwin, Mayor of the City of Raleigh, North Carolina, in honor of your 100th anniversary, hereby proclaim February 2020 in the city of Raleigh as League of Women Voters of Wake County Month. Do you all want a photo? Listen, you can go over here and get a photo. How's that? Oh, you know what? I don't want to have your sash down. So I'll take it. Some leave numbers. Now here for...
Just taking a photo.
Yeah, very quickly.
Come on.
Somebody in the middle can hold the sash. Thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll wait for folks to leave, and then we will have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Mike Raely from Victory Baptist Church. Hi. You're going to lead us today, the invocation. Thank you.
Our Father, your word tells us in Proverbs that King's heart is a stream of water in the hand of the Lord. He turns it wherever he will. This morning, we assemble to address matters important to the city of Raleigh. These elected officials, these leaders are here as a part of your sovereign design. And our desire and duty is to pray for them, that during this meeting, and even tonight's meeting, they will have divine wisdom to govern this great city of ours. I pray for Mayor Mary Ann Baldwin, Mayor Pro Tem Cory Branch, and the rest of the city council, that they would have your mind and exercise wise discernment in matters that are important to the city. And I pray for those assembled here, as they present their business to the city council, and that they would have your wisdom as well. And we ask that you would just bless this great city of ours, its leaders, its residents, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Cox, I believe it's your turn to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was nothing pulled on the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next matter is the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission. I believe we have two rezonings to reschedule, I mean, to schedule.
Good afternoon. Ken Bowers from Planning and Development, joined by, left by Bob Geary for the Planning Commission. Quick recap of what's currently on schedule for public hearing. We have two items on February 18, and only three items so far scheduled for March 3. So accordingly, the two items being reported out today. Staff is recommending a March 3 public hearing date. So the first item is a request to rezone about 3 and 1/4 acres of land on Sunny Brook Road from R6 to OX3 Parking Limited with conditions. This was reviewed by the East CAC and received a favorable vote of 7 to 2 in favor of approval. The Planning Commission has recommended approval on an 8 to 0 vote. The staff and Planning Commission found the case, although inconsistent with the land use map, to be consistent with the plan overall, and we're recommending the March 3 public hearing date.
Move for approval for March 3 hearing date.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Next item, Z3619. This is on Pool Road, is intersection with South New Hope Road. A request to rezone about 17 and 1/4 acres from CX3 to CX4 Parking Limited. So same district with a frontage applied and additional story requested. Southeast CAC met on this and considered it and recommended against adoption on a 3 to 15 vote. The Planning Commission was split. There were two failed motions, one each for approval and denial. So this has come to you without a recommendation from the commission, notwithstanding a public hearing date of March 3 is recommended.
Move for approval for March 3 public hearing.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item, special items, is the Police Oversight Review Board, an update. Dr. Caesar?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
So this presentation is an update to the community engagement sessions that we have. But just to give you some background, on May 21, there were models that were presented, and there were three options. The Police Oversight Board, which was about investigations and subpoena power, the Police Review Board, which was advisory, and then the Office of Citizen Advocacy, which was an internal board. The steps that were identified to council, identified by council, I see you've got the packets coming around. This is a revised final report, and it just updates some typographical errors, but the content is virtually the same. After that presentation, council made some recommendations to add a fourth option of a hybrid model with the Office of Citizen Advocacy and a three to five-person board. Also to explore and enhance internal affairs process, and then to conduct a community engagement process to obtain resident feedback. So the report that you are going to get information on today is that community engagement plan. The initial plan was presented on September 3 and also October 5 with revisions. And here are the locations. There were six sessions conducted in each of the districts. And here's the participant data. So we have the locations, the resident participants, and also Raleigh Police participants at each session. So the total number of attendees at each, at all of the sessions collectively was 191 participants. That's a relatively small sample size. We consider, we're a city of approximately 500,000, and so we've got 191 attendees. The session began with a presentation, and it was exactly the same presentation that was given on May 21 at the council meeting. The pros and cons for each type of board was outlined, and also eligibility criteria, roles and responsibilities for those interested in participating in the board. Data was collected through roundtable discussions. The sessions were hosted by the Raleigh Human Relations Commission, and they served as facilitators and scribes. But the four questions that were discussed at the tables were as follows. We asked participants to describe their ideal community. We asked them, does Raleigh need a review board? Why or why not? And then, in your own words, describe the goal of the Police Review Board. And then, do any of these options make sense for Raleigh? What you see here is a cycle, and these are all the themes that came from the data. The top two being the ones that showed up the most. Number one is transparency, and the second one is accountability. Then you have trust, communication, mutual respect, equity, and safety. The way it seems that the comments went, all of the other options, 3 through 7, are a direct result of 1 and 2, with some leeway with communication kind of being a mitigating factor. What you'll see when you see the responses is that number one was the most important theme, transparency. Residents want to understand the process, and they want to know what's going on with investigations in real time. The first question was to describe your ideal community. And so we've got this little Taj Pod of words. And really, folks wanted a welcoming, equitable, safe, respectful, and supportive community. And throughout all of the sessions, it was the same thing. Everybody wanted the same thing. The second question was, does Raleigh need a review board? Why or why not? These are the responses for those who answered yes. As you can see in each of the blocks, trust, accountability, transparency, accountability, these are the general themes. I'll read a couple of these direct quotes. Under trust, yes, there needs to be checks and balances that provide a bridge to increasing trust. And then under accountability, put police departments in its place to serve citizens. Citizens need a way to evaluate service being provided. A review board will be a means to do that. For those who answered no, trust, accountability, and communication. And I'll go with communication for this one. No. Understanding of major IA process in place now. So what they're saying is, the community needs a better understanding of the current IA process. They need full disclosure, enhanced transparency, and then we can build trust. So it's about education. The third question was to describe the goal of the Police Review Board. And three themes came out of that question. The first goal being relationship building and community relations. I'll read the second quote. To repair social relationships of the greater community, to validate the good work of the police department, and then also to enhance community relations. Second goal was transparency. There are breakdowns and barriers to trust and communication when we don't have transparency. And then the third is accountability, to ensure that citizens know that the police department is being operated equitably, and they're being accountable. There was also some mention multiple times to this idea of sharing power. There should be some way to share power between the community and the police department. Number four, do any of these options make sense for Raleigh? You can see the number of responses for each. 22 for police oversight, 8 for the review board, 8 for citizen advocacy, and then other. Other is a wide variety of things, from maybe a model that's not currently up here, some other means to achieve this desire for transparency and accountability. It was just a variety of different things. In your report, you have the raw data, so you can see all of the responses that residents have suggested. The final question that folks were asked on the way out is, what does council need to do right now? And from that list, we identified biggest opportunities for the city. The first is being to educate the residents on the current IA process, as well as RPD policies and procedures. Two was to focus on improving police-community relations while sharing power and safety and responsibilities in the community. And then the ongoing need for racial equity training, along with mental health first aid. There's also a recognition that police officers need more support for their health and well-being, and that the community needs to be included in decisions and actions that impact them directly. Community members expressed a real desire to continue the dialogue and to build an equitable relationship with the Raleigh Police Department. In terms of a conclusion, there's no one model that met everyone's wishes. Everybody had a different idea of what they expected, but there was a strong desire from the community members that council should do something to address the issues of transparency and accountability in the form of some type of review board. And that's the end of the update, and I'll take your questions at this time.
Are there any questions?
I just have one question. In the conclusion, the last two, when it says the community wants to be included in decision actions that impact them directly, and I'm assuming within our date, the background, there's some examples of what that means? Or was there a census of what they meant by that?
Right. So the way this was structured is that we took the questions, and we took the exact responses that community members made. And we grouped them into themes, and so that is one of the, those were the top two themes. So you'll find that in the raw data. So as you read through, and there's a lot to read through in the report, you'll see that those themes come up, and that should address that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Mark?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a few things. I noticed in the photos, and when I've talked with folks, that officers were present in a lot of the community meetings. And so I'm curious, as we're looking at the answers, and I think that everyone would agree that we, and you said this in the conclusion, that people are looking for ways to have that dialogue. But I'm curious, as I'm trying to dissect from the data, the answers that were provided, were officers also answering the questions?
Yes. Both officers and residents participated and gave feedback.
Thank you. And my second question is, of the 191 people that attended, it looks like only 86 responded to the questions. Do you have a breakdown of where, it would be interesting for me if there was kind of a race breakdown as well of where the responses came in, so people that were for and against. And, you know, I think that a lot of us are aware of that this is most certainly an equity issue. And so while that data may not exist, I think that moving forward, the more data that we capture, the better we can do our job. And so any way that we can support that effort on your behalf to move in that direction, I'm happy to do. But I think that it's important for us to know where this information's coming from. And to be frank, I want to support at every turn the opportunity for those that protect us every single day to have the ability to sit down and be in community with the people that they're meant to protect. And it's something that I've strived to do in this position, and to get to know the folks that do that work and put their lives on the line so that I can better understand what they go through. But it is a little shocking to realize that their answers are included in this, and that that wasn't disclosed. So I just, thank you for being honest, but that's it.
Are you asking then for demographic data, kind of moving forward?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. Couple of things. So the count is different because this was a qualitative data collection process. So folks can abstain. If they choose not to answer a question, there, we won't make them answer a question. It's whatever was documented when we went around. Everybody was given the opportunity in terms of, and I can give you a general sense of police department responses, if that's what you're asking. The vast majority of the police officers stated that they were not in favor of a review board. However, there was some recognition that the IA process was something that needed to be communicated in more depth, and also that there's a need to improve police-community relations. So again, that's also, you'll read that when you read the raw data packet, and it's very lengthy.
I just want to, I just want to... I just want to, I know that this was the first step, too. So, I want to acknowledge that. And I think that it is incumbent upon us at this table to support your efforts and to move expeditiously, and yet, be very thorough and mindful of the various forces at play here, so that we can make change happen, but not at the expense of any one group. So, I think that it is ever-important that the officers have, that we're working with them and understanding where the stressors are, and the ways that we can support their work, so that they can bring their full, healthy selves to the table. At the same time, we have to be having those conversations with the community as well. So, anything that we can do from the table, saying this to the officers in the room as well, you know, we're here, and I just want to be very transparent moving forward about how we're doing that.
Okay. With no more questions, I'm going to make a motion. This has been discussed for three years now, and I know there's been a lot of frustration within the community about a lack of action. So, today, we're going to take the first step. First, I'm going to make a motion, this is three parts, or at least three sentences. First is to create an advisory board that will be charged with policy and procedural oversight, and help the RPD build community trust and relationships. Would also ask that this board use the themes that were outlined here as guiding principles to begin their work. The second part, the five members will include a mental health professional, a civil rights attorney, a victim advocate, an LGBT representative, and an appointee of the police chief. The third part, we are going to ask staff to determine where it will be housed and who it reports to, this board. And then, I'd also like to ask you to develop a vehicle for complaints regarding police, whereby complainants do not have to go to RPD to actually file that. There have been, well, sources, you know, people feel intimidated, so I can understand that. Let's, let's see if we can find something that's a little more friendly. And that is my motion. And what I'm asking you to do is come back to us at the next meeting, and how this is going to be set up, and how we move forward. I would also like to ask that anybody interested in serving on this board, I'm going to ask that they send resumes to their city council members, so we can forward those to you for validation, based on the five categories that I've outlined.
So, Madam Mayor, though that doesn't address all of the things that were brought to us, it is a step forward in working to try to, you know, bridge the gap and address the challenges that we as a city are facing. So, I will second the motion.
As I said, this is the first step. And what I am very pleased to see is that people do want to work together. We can't get anything done if we're at odds with each other. So, first step. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Sorry, I think that, okay. Quickly on that, and for Dr. Caesar, I do think that, and you and I have talked at length about this, so I just want to say it publicly, that I think that it is important for this board to be implemented, and, but I also think that, as the elected body, we cannot rely on this board to always do the work for us. And so, if there are moments where there's policy brought forth that we know could work, and we've been in touch with the chief, and with the community, and with staff, I think that we are, it is very important for us to move diligently and quickly to enact that, if appropriate, and not to rely on the board to do that work for us. And I know, we've talked a lot about that, to get to a good place, so I feel comfortable supporting it, but I do, I just want to say that publicly.
Well, one of the reasons why we changed the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee back to save, healthy, and vibrant neighborhoods, so we could take safety issues and police issues and address them in committee, where we're held accountable. So, that was the purpose in that, from the very beginning.
Mayor, may I just add? I voted in favor, and I do support it. I just wanted to add, you know, the conclusion says, there's not one model that fits everyone's wishes. And this obviously is not a model that I think is everything it needs to be. I'm supporting it, because it's a step in the right direction, and I hope we can continue to do this work. As a citizen, before I was elected, I was tired of this being talked about over and over, and nothing happening. So, I'm glad we've decided to do something. It's not perfect. It's not everything I want it to be, but it's a step in the right direction, and I support it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody for their work, and also, the Human Relations Commission for the work they've done on this. Okay. All right. Next is, putting on my glasses. Regulatory strategies for housing affordability in choice, quick fixes, and bigger steps. Jason?
Jason Harden with Planning and Development. So, council had asked us, a few meetings back, to take a look at some of these affordability-related steps that, as a city, that we can take, to look at some of the regulatory barriers to affordability in the city. Obviously, it's a, it's a key issue citywide, a lot of discussion about how to provide additional subsidies, but the examples that we've seen from other cities across the country that have tackled this issue tell us that both subsidies and a look at some of the regulatory barriers to affordability are necessary solutions to take place at the same time. So, I have several specific actions that can address, again, what we've called the low-hanging fruit here. But I also want to talk through just a little bit about the background of this. I think sometimes it's not very obvious, the relationship of zoning to affordability and sustainability to a lot of people. Sometimes people hear some suggestions like these and think, well, density for density's sake. But in fact, there are some significant barriers that zoning can provide. Over time, zoning has often been used to exclude as much as it has to include. So, in a sense, this is an opportunity to turn that on its head and look at ways where we can address these barriers. It's something we hear about a lot. So, right now, we're in the process of planning for land use and housing around our bus rapid transit system. And as part of that effort, we've asked this question pretty explicitly, and people have told us that they really want to be able to have the chance to live in a walkable place with transit and amenities nearby, but often, they're not able to, because the housing types they're looking for just don't exist, or they're out of reach in terms of affordability. And people have told us, again, that they are happy to consider a trade-off, in a sense, a smaller housing unit, a different housing type, in exchange for the ability to live in these places where there's high levels of opportunity and walkability. In fact, many people don't regard it as a trade-off at all. That's the perfect type of housing for them, a duplex, for instance, or a townhouse. So, these are some of the bigger-picture issues that these low-hanging fruit are designed to address. And what makes something low-hanging? Well, the way we're looking at it is, something that generally respects the existing scale of residential neighborhoods, doesn't create a sharp change, and yet, does allow some additional housing opportunity and choice. And that's why these kind of strategies have increasingly been used in cities and communities across the country, and I think are going to be a very common strategy in the years to come. So, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the missing middle. The bulk of these strategies are what we would call a missing-middle strategy. So, for some, I know this is a new term, but the idea is actually pretty simple. It's a traditional housing type, duplex, triplex, quad, a small apartment, in a sense, a townhouse, that are found throughout our city, especially in older neighborhoods, but are gradually being lost, because many of these existing examples aren't legal, and it's certainly not legal to create new ones in these neighborhoods. So, over time, they're gradually replaced by larger detached, single-family houses. That's because there's, right now, basically, a gap in our development code. On one hand, you have residential districts, R6 and R10, that they ensure that relatively residential scale, I think that most people have in mind when they talk about the character of a neighborhood, but either they outright don't permit these missing-middle types, or because of density limitations, they're effectively not something that anyone would ever build. On the flip side, in our mixed-use districts, RX, OX, three stories or more, you can certainly build a duplex in that kind of a district, but no one ever does that, because it's simply not going to provide the return on investment. And from a policy standpoint, those are areas where we desire, as a city, to have the highest levels of accessibility, because there are high levels of walkability and opportunity in those districts. So, there's a gap in the middle that is, in large part, what we're talking about today. So, one great thing about the strategy is, it's pretty easy to envision what it looks like, because it, in fact, it already exists in older neighborhoods across the city. So, you can literally find examples all over the city where you have duplexes, or triplex, or quadplex units, and they're not conforming because of density limitations, but are, I think, by and large, structures that people are well-used to seeing in their community, and don't create a great deal of, again, change, if they're even distinguishable from their neighboring structures. So, this is an example of just actually how widespread these non-conforming types are in the city, mostly within the Belt Line, but not entirely. You've got a fair number in North Raleigh as well. And what we've seen, actually, in looking at the numbers in recent years, is these, the numbers are dropping. Again, that's because of that gap that I talked about, where in some districts, they're just not possible anymore, even though they exist in those same districts. And then, the incentives in places where they are allowed are to provide some additional housing beyond these modestly scaled houses. So, big picture, how does this affect the question of housing affordability? Well, what we're seeing is Raleigh grows, other cities grow, add opportunity, people are moving to Raleigh and other cities that are adding jobs and that are welcoming diverse places. Well, they're having a hard time finding a place to live, they're looking further and further out, and that means commutes are longer. And what that does is, it creates an especially large premium on places that are close to opportunity, and allow people to short-circuit that commute, and maybe even walk to where they want to go for a lot of trips. So, those are the kind of places, and again, I mentioned the process of planning around transit, that we didn't make an awful lot of in Raleigh over the last several decades. This is just not how our city grew during that time. So, the places that we do have that fit that description are in extremely high demand. So, the land values are getting higher. And so, a given parcel in R6 or R10, let's say, the most high-value use there, under our current zoning, is typically going to be a very large detached house. And so, that's what we see in many of these neighborhoods. The only way to provide an alternative is to spread the cost of that land. It's the fundamental land value that's, that's high. Land value is created by access, it's meaningless of itself, in and of itself. Land has high value, because it's close to things that we want to get to, jobs, parks, shopping, amenities. So, when the land value gets that high, the only option for addressing that is to share the cost of that land, to spread it across additional housing units, and allow much less expensive housing, and allowing more people to live in these high-opportunity areas. So, and the structures that we're talking about may look similar to, even identical from, or smaller than newer detached houses. So, just as an example, the, the two there, the, the top would be legal in most of these districts. The bottom example, a duplex would not be. It's also important to think about sustainability as well, not just affordability. The city has a goal, set by city council, to dramatically reduce carbon emissions over the next several decades. I think the perception is often that tackling climate change is something that happens in DC, and that there's a lot of paralysis on that issue. In fact, a lot of the changes that are going to be necessary as a society to meet those kinds of carbon reduction are going to come from things that local governments do have control of, how we get around, transportation, building types. And so, this is an example of how a local government can take some actions that do directly address climate change. So, this is a chart that illustrates average per-unit energy use by housing type. So, because these missing-middle types share walls or ceilings in some cases, they tend to be more efficient, because they are more likely to be constructed in walkable areas near transit, where the land value is higher. That means they're likely to generate fewer vehicle and more walking or transit trips. So, overall, the carbon footprint being lower, and this being something that it will be very difficult for Raleigh or the country as a whole to address these questions without looking at some of these land use issues at the same time. So, that's the background, and now, I'll walk through quickly some of the specific low-hanging fruit strategies that we've identified. So, one is townhouses.
Jason, hold on just one second, okay? I'm going to ask everybody to wait until you get through the presentation before we ask questions. We'll start, we'll go through it, and then, we'll go back to one. And if you could go through the low-hanging fruit and the higher-hanging fruit, and then, we'll revisit. Okay?
Great. So, I just have a few of these. The first is, is townhouses in R6. So, townhouses are permitted in R6 currently. However, there's some pretty extensive restrictions on where they can be used in that R6, that R6, that's residential six, six units to the acre district. So, it's only on sites that are 10 acres or more, and there's some pretty significant requirements on top of those. We've also seen some recent trends in rezoning, where someone will request R10 to allow townhouses, but include a condition that brings down the density to six or eight units per acre. And that's been a request that, in many cases, has been successful. So, I think that indicates that both there's a desire for people to live in this kind of product, in townhouses that are relatively low-density, and a general, general acceptance of this kind of concept from our CACs and in many of our neighborhoods. So, similarly, but could be a separate action, would be looking at what I call an efficiency or affordability bonus, again, looking at the townhouse building type. This is because townhouses are often outcompeted for land by larger detached houses. So, if I have a piece of land on which I could have, say, four detached houses or four townhouses, often, the choice made by someone developing that property would be for the detached houses, which is fine, but it doesn't necessarily reflect some of the advantages that we also talked about that townhouses could provide. So, the concept here is to provide a pretty modest bonus density for townhouses in R6 or R10. Small enough that I think it would be actually visually very difficult to perceive that difference, but enough to allow some additional housing opportunities in these areas. Duplexes. So, duplexes are allowed in residential districts, for the most part, but require, I think this is something that's not well-known, twice the land. So, in an R10 district, let's say, say I have two tenths of an acre. I could either provide two detached houses or only one duplex. I think most people have the perception that you could do two duplex, each with two units, but that's not the case, because of the density limits set by the code. So, the solution here would be in R6 and R10, to allow duplexes at the same, as long as they meet the same dimensional and other setback in lot standards as detached houses, to simply allow those regardless of the density. And potentially, to consider that same approach in other districts as well. This one is more of a quirk of the code, and it has to do with transition requirements. So, we've now moved away from those missing-middle examples. This has to do with apartments in three-story mixed-use districts. So, in an RX district, the only transition required between that building and an adjacent residential district is a 10-foot separation. But the exact same building in a different mixed-use district, again, being used for apartments for residential uses, just because it's in a neighborhood mixed-use or community mixed-use district, would require a larger transition. So, the solution here is simply to tie the transition to the building type and the use, not the zoning district. And then, finally, senior housing. There are minimum lot sizes for what we call continuing care retirement communities. That's where you have a rest home, and also, some other housing types to enable potentially people to live there over time, as their needs change, and medical needs may increase. But there's a lot limitation, a lot size limitation on these, that tends to limit the number of available sites and/or make them compete with commercial uses in mixed-use districts where there is no lot size. So, the suggestion here is to simply eliminate the limit. Obviously, any retirement community is going to have a certain amount of space and space needs, based on parking, landscaping, and so on, but a relatively arbitrary limit on what the minimum size is can be removed. So, those are what we call the, the low-hanging fruit. There's some subjectivity there, but there are some other concepts that may be perceived as low-hanging as well. So, one is, I talked a lot about duplexes and allowing them at the same dimensional standards as detached houses. Well, a similar approach would be for three- or four-unit apartments. Well, a similar approach would be for three- or four-unit apartments, allowing that same system to take place with those. And we saw examples of not just duplex, but three- or four-unit apartments across the city. So again, a fairly common housing type in older neighborhoods. And then what we have started to call a TODR district, and this relates pretty directly to the planning work that we've been doing around bus rapid transit. And it's thinking about areas beyond the immediate core area of a BRT station where certainly the policy would be to allow much more housing and job opportunity. These are more residential areas and it might be along the lines of the above item about the triplex and fourplex, allowing those in these places that are within walking distance of our highest levels of future transit, bus rapid transit, but outside the core areas. So I'd be happy to take questions. And what we've set up in terms of potential actions or next steps for the council would be, for each of these ideas, including the higher hanging fruit, three options could be to go ahead and authorize a text change process. So that would enable Planning Commission and additional community feedback and review on these ideas before coming back to council. Could refer to a committee for additional conversation and discussion. Or could, in some cases, if there's a desire to have a specific outreach before authorizing a text change, then we could come up with a plan, strategy for that kind of community outreach. So with that, happy to take any questions that y'all have.
Okay, so first thing, the TOD district, I would like to send that to the Transportation and Transit Committee for study and recommendation if the full council...
Yeah, that'll be perfect because we're actually looking to refine the TOD and put some standards in once the equivalency study, all that information comes in. So I will accept that, that's not a problem.
Okay, do we need a vote on that?
No.
Do we need a vote on that, sending this to committee?
No objections.
With that, it's any objections? Okay, so that's one answer. I know other people have lots of questions, I think. Councilor Stewart, you were first.
I'm eager. This is amazing. I'm very, very excited about everything that's coming out of this report today. So thank you so much and thank you for wrapping in the context of climate change and sustainability. I know that speaks to me personally. I do have one question about the duplex proposal. If we were to move forward with a text change, I would also want to make sure that if a duplex is torn down, that it would be able to be rebuilt. So would this proposal in front of us, obviously, we need to craft the text change, but would it cover that?
Yes, it certainly would.
Okay, great. That's my first question, but I'll let others ask.
Yeah, what's your second? Go on.
Did we talk about frontage? I know it was in the backup, but I can't remember if we brought up the frontages piece. One of the things, I know we had it in the previous Healthy Neighborhood Committee meeting, and I struggled a lot with getting my head around what exactly this meant for missing middle.
Oh, you mean DE?
Yeah, the detached frontage, yeah. And so I'm wondering, it's more of a request as we head into directing some of these things, but if we could get a better understanding and even visualizing or visualization of what this means in terms of missing middle, I think that would be really helpful. I feel like it's somewhere, I don't know where it is, but it's somewhere I'm not quite grasping, so I would love better visualization, please.
Sure, then that's absolutely something we can provide either in the form of a memo to council or if there's a desire for some committee work on that.
I think if you put something together with strong visuals and examples, and that was included in the city manager's report, that would be great. I know the city manager's report this time around with the tiny homes and whatnot, having the visuals was really helpful. So let's do that with the frontage piece.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Councilor Martin? Okay?
I know in the backup material, R two and R four were mentioned, but they're not in this presentation. I just want to make sure as far as the text change, are we strictly talking about R six and R ten?
For the most part, I think it's your option, and specifically with the duplex concept, did want to put that out there as a question for council. So there's a couple of different routes that y'all can take on that. You could go ahead and say it should either be R six and R ten or not, maybe include all the other districts. Or that could be a specific question to pose to the Planning Commission in their review and to develop a recommendation on that question.
Okay, for me, I think going forward with R six and R ten is good. Excuse me. As far as R two and R four, I would have some questions about lot sizes and probably at that point, putting some minimums in because some R twos are tiny and, you know, and some aren't, but I just want to, that would be the part of the conversation I would want us to have if those two were considered. But as long as we keep it as R six and R ten, then I'm fine.
So I have a question related to this. You know, currently, I think the stat is you can't build a townhome in about 80% of the city. If we add R six and R ten to those zones, what's the percentage change in that? Is it...
It would drop. There still are obviously a lot of districts in Raleigh that are R one, R two, particularly R four. That's the largest single residential district. So it would not, at least for townhouses.
So it's not going to remove the needle much? A little?
There's a substantial amount of R six that this would affect.
In the manager's report, could you include that in there, just so we understand what the numbers look like? I like data. Right, Councilor Melton, I know you had a question.
Was the "hold your questions to the end" comment directed at me? I don't have a lot of questions for this one.
Okay, I thought your face said otherwise, but you were just smiling at me.
I do have a question.
Okay.
I also want to say thank you for including the examples of the missing middle that's already on the ground. I think that with, as we have these conversations, it's easy for folks to be afraid of what change may look like. And the reality of it is, is that in a lot of our neighborhoods, our older neighborhoods that have a lot of character, we have a lot of these missing middle housings already on the ground. And I live in one of them, those neighborhoods, and you wouldn't even, unless you're really trying to tell, you can't even really tell it's a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex. So I think as we're moving forward, we have a finite amount of land. And so if we don't make the best use of it, we're going to run out and we have to find places to house people. So my question is, in the presentation, it seems to be a distinction between the duplexes and then triplex, fourplexes. Is there a reason for that distinction or could be looking at them more holistic or together?
The distinction is that the direction for council was to go after the lowest hanging fruit. And I think that some of the communities that have gone a little bit bigger on that question and looked at triplexes and fourplexes at the same time, they've had a little bit more of a community outreach process on that. So that's the distinction that if council wants to go ahead and proceed, I think the duplexes are something, again, I think there's a perception that you already can build a duplex on a detached house-sized lot. I think for many people, a three- or four-unit apartment, that's not something that they've thought about as much, so could require some more outreach. Again, one person's low hanging fruit, though, is another's coconut, so there's some discretion here.
But if we're looking at duplexes to, as long as they meet the same dimensional requirements, wouldn't a triplex or a fourplex, if it could meet the same dimensional requirements of a two-story house, I mean, that would fit in the same conversation?
Yeah, they're typically regarded to be a classic missing middle housing type because, again, and the examples that we looked at illustrate that, they're already here and in many cases are very similar to or indistinguishable from their detached neighbors.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
I share Mr. Branch's perception of this. Definitely ready to move forward with R six and R ten, but I have reservations about R two and R four.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. I want to make sure I got that right. One person's low hanging fruit is another's coconut?
That's right.
Okay. Thanks for your work on this. Echo Councilor Stewart's thoughts and appreciation for your work on this. And I had a couple of questions about the side on duplex and make sure I'm understanding this. The issue you've described is duplexes are allowed in residential districts but require twice the land. That's a requirement of our current code, is that?
That's, yeah, that's exactly right. So say, a typical R six lot, based on the lot size, so a sixth of an acre, so you can build a single detached house there, you could not build a duplex on that lot. It would require a lot double that size because the density calculation would mean that a duplex would breach that density limit. So in essence, it doesn't happen because if you have two R six lots, the higher value for someone building that is going to be two detached houses. So higher value for them, but a less affordable housing product for the community.
Got it, thank you. And on the same slide, can you share a little more detail about how we would allow duplexes to be split across lots?
Sure. So that goes to the idea that for many people, ownership itself would be an important part of that. So often, a duplex might have one owner and then a renter, but for many people, it's going to be a more desirable product, and there are obviously tax and other benefits to owning rather than renting. So right now, that's not something that would be possible under the code, but the way we could shape this is, in essence, a duplex that would be, the building would be split over the lot line. Probably the best comparison I can think of would be a two-unit townhouse. It would be essentially the same kind of product, so that each owner would own their portion of that building and the underlying lot. It's to provide, and we had a similar conversation with the cottage court text change, the way it previously had been created, it provided a lot of flexibility, but really only set up renter opportunities. The way it's been rewritten, it now allows fee simple lots, so there's a choice. It could be developed either with rental units as part of a larger court or with individual fee simple lots, if that's something that's more appealing to people. So the same kind of approach with the duplex as well.
Great, that's very helpful. And finally, I'd just like to say thanks for including the issue of the senior housing and the minimum lot size. I appreciate the attention to that and think it's an important part of this effort. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Knight?
Yeah, thank you. I also just want to say thanks to the staff for working on this and also for the mayor for pushing this forward. I think a lot of us have been talking about these issues, at least since last summer, and we're talking about them because this is what the citizens want, this is what our residents want, and I think it's what most Americans want. And we've got to think like that because we're out there competing for talent and we're in competition with the rest of the cities out there. And this is when I talk about thriving city is good for the environment. This is what it's about. It's about affordability, it's about sustainability, and these lead to that. I mean, this is part of our climate strategy, is this type of development, and that means it's sustainable. So I appreciate the work on it and I look forward to working with the council and the rest of the city to bring these items and issues to fruition, to continue allowing our city to thrive. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and thank you to the staff. And I also want to thank the community. This has been in discussion since I was on the council three years ago, so different facets of it. So I'm excited to get moving. A lot of us heard about housing affordability and the spectrum of housing throughout the entire campaign. So what I'd like to do right now is just start with the first option and then work our way through and go from there. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to start things off and provide direction to staff. I'm ready to make some motions, but I want to hog the spotlight.
I'll jump in.
Okay.
I see jumping.
Why don't you just go ahead and lead, but we'll, Councilor Stewart will lead.
So starting at the top of townhouses by right in R six, I'd like to move that we authorize staff to draft a text change, to move on townhouses by right, actually in R two, R four, R six, and so on.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that is seven to one, okay. Efficiency bonus for townhouses is the second item.
Go ahead, Melton.
I don't know how to do it, so someone else do it.
I move that we authorize staff to draft a text change regarding efficiency bonus for townhouses.
Second, I know how to do that, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Allow duplexes. And let me just clarify, Councilor Stewart, you had asked that by addressing this issue that we, when a duplex is torn down, because I've seen this happen over and over again, especially on Canterbury Road, duplex, triplex, quads are all being torn down, and now it's just massive McMansions, when that was all missing middle housing. It kind of breaks my heart. But I just want to make sure if somebody does that, they can replace it.
Right, we'll make sure that that's included.
Okay, all right.
I move that...
Do you want to roll?
Yeah, sure. I would love to do these all at once. I move that staff authorize, are we authorized? Yep. That we move to authorize staff to work on a text change to allow duplexes by right throughout the city.
So...
Throughout the city.
R two, R four.
Okay.
Just duplexes.
Second.
I have my concerns, but I'll let y'all. I mean, my concerns is really when we look at R two and R four, what are those lot sizes? That's something I think needs to be really looked at and that we may need to have a lot minimal, especially when we talk about R two in particular. So that's the reason why, unless we, I'm willing to add a friendly amendment that to your motion, that before, the friendly amendment is that we also engage and look at what a appropriate lot size would be for anything within R two and R four for a duplex.
So I don't know that we need a friendly amendment on that. I think staff, that's the direction from the council table, if you could incorporate that in your, as you move this forward.
Can that...
We can.
Okay.
We'll make sure that's part of the planning commission, the report that they see and the analysis that they look at.
And can you do that for those townhomes too, the one that we passed first? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Seven to one. Align transition requirements. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then facilitate senior housing. I'm going to leave this to you, Mr. Buffkin.
I move that council authorize a text change with respect to the facilitating senior housing item.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I was going to say, just so everyone's aware, that we're authorized in the work on the text change, this still will come back before council, we'll still have public hearings and inputs on all of these items. So we're asking staff to come back with the data and the information so that we can see how it looks going forward.
Thank you. I have one question. So these were the low hanging fruit. Are you going to jump to the coconuts?
Um...
I mean, that was good.
Yes, I'm not done. I also would like to have a discussion about triplexes and fourplexes when we look at duplexes. And if you could make that a separate text change, because I feel that that might need more outreach and discussion, and I don't want to hold up the duplexes. So that will be a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Does this also include R two and R four?
Yes.
No.
Then there's the DE frontage, but we're going to get that back.
We're going to get some more information.
Hold on, that was seven one, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So with the detached, we'll put that in an upcoming manager's report with some visual examples of what that could do.
And I think going forward, including visuals in your reports is really important. I think that was really helpful. I'm one of these kind of geeky people who actually walked around my neighborhood with my dogs and was taking pictures of all of the missing middle housing. And it's amazing to me how much is there.
Take all those pictures?
No, he stole them, yeah. But it really, this is housing that exists, it's housing that was built in the 1930s and 40s, before we had 1950 zoning laws. They exist in some of our most desirable neighborhoods, and they actually add to the character, they don't detract from the character. So I'm excited to begin this journey, and we'll let you get through the low hanging fruit before we start on the higher, much higher hanging fruit. Thank you. Great report.
Thank you.
Third, we have Nick Fugue.
Madam, I'd like to make a motion, not sure if Mr. Fugue is here or not. This sits in my district. When Mr. Fugue raised this request at our last meeting, I asked the council to defer this item until I had time to meet with him and with the residents in the surrounding area. I have met with both Mr. Fugue and his builder, developer, and also met with a number of the residents who live near... I have met with both Mr. Fugue and his builder, developer, and also met with a number of the residents who live near contiguous to this property, many of whom were very involved in the rezoning case for the site from just a few years ago. After speaking with everyone involved, I know all parties are actively working together to resolve some outstanding concerns, and they would like a little more time to continue these conversations. So I would like to ask that the council defer this item until our March 3 meeting to allow ample time for these conversations to continue, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Next, we have the report and recommendation of the city manager, the first being the 2019 crime data presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we prepare for this next presentation, I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we begin. As you may recall, the mayor and council had requested some review and crime analysis of our crime statistics, which we will be happy to provide at any point. It did make sense for us to look at that trend on an annual basis, and so you'll see that in the report today. There's two points I would like to make before the police chief makes the presentation. The first is I would encourage everyone, both the council as well as the citizens, to try to look at the data maybe analytically and objectively. So matters of public safety are critical in our community. There often can be alignment with perception versus what's actually going on in the data. And so we think it's very important to look at this very carefully in terms of what is the data showing us. The second is I just wanted to take a personal moment and indicate my support for Police Chief Cassandra Deck Brown and the Raleigh Police Department. Matters of crime and safety in our community is perhaps one of the most fundamental values that any community must wrestle with. And it often falls to our police department and oftentimes to the police chief to try to manage that. But as we all know, matters of safety is something that's important to everyone, and it's a part of our entire community. And so it's a tough job. It's also important for our entire community to try to wrestle with that. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Police Chief Cassandra Deck Brown, to members of the command staff, as well as all of the people that work hard in the Raleigh Police Department. We're going to do this together. So with that, I'll turn it over to the police chief, and she can make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Greetings, Mayor and Council. This presentation really is an overview of crime in the city of Raleigh. And I'll begin with an opening statement that the city of Raleigh is indeed a safe place to live, work, play, and learn. This is done in part to the proactive and preventive efforts of the men and women of the Raleigh Police Department, as well as the community, in order to address many of our criminal elements that do impact not only crime but quality of life. Those efforts further speak to the interdepartmental collaboration with many of our city departments, as well as those agencies beyond city government to include criminal justice and non-governmental organizations who help to make sure that we are making a difference in our community. As noted, in 2019 State of the Downtown presentation actually done by the Downtown Raleigh Alliance, we are seeing obviously a tremendous growth throughout the city. And referencing population density, it was noted that 6,474 people per square mile are in the downtown area. And 3,241 people per square mile are in existence throughout the rest of the city. We are growing by leaps and bounds. I want to begin with addressing Group A offenses, and this is basically how they are categorized as we send data to the FBI. And wanting to take a look at the last five years. A little later this year, the complete 2019 report will be published and reported to the FBI as we do on an annual basis. I want to begin with looking at the major crimes that do impact both persons and property. The blue line that you see pretty much separates crimes against people and crimes against property. The Group A offenses are, there again, most of those crimes are reported to the police. As the chart shows, a five-year period, I will speak more specifically about several of those areas as this overall report continues. But overall, as you can see in the five-year period, we have remained somewhat flat in those areas, meaning that we have not seen significant jumps in those areas. As we take a look at the crime rate, in 2019, the city of Raleigh's approximate population is 477,276. This population estimate is based on 1.7% increase in the previous year's population. And that is based on population statistics, and the following crime rates per 1,000 people were determined. First crime on the list is burglaries. We'll take a look at the property crime first. And as we take a look at property crimes, and more specifically, the burglaries that you see here represent both residential and commercial burglaries. And they have decreased significantly since 2000, from 2018 and 2019. I want to speak momentarily about the investigative efforts of our staff as well. While not every case has solvability factors when you are working with burglaries, it is important to note that in a city this size, our clearance rate for commercial burglaries is 35.4% and 26% for residential burglaries, while the national clearance rate is 13.9. So there is a lot of work, and very often just old-fashioned police work that goes into investigating these cases, identifying patterns and trends so that we can bring closure and the necessary charges should we need to on these types of cases. When we look at those patterns and trends, it also affords us the opportunity to redeploy personnel and other assets and really pay very close attention to the analysis and the data that comes behind these crimes as they are reporting. And obviously also looking at the other correlations. As we take a look at robberies, we're looking at robberies from businesses, robberies from persons, and home invasions. And as you can see, the overall reduction from 2017 to 2019 was by 4%. From persons, we're really talking about mainly street-level type robberies. We saw a slight increase in 2019, and then home invasions were reduced significantly by 48%. As we take a look at larcenies, reported larcenies include both those that are completed, the crime actually occurred and was accomplished, as well as those that were attempted. And then these numbers, we have combined both for one total. 30% of our reported larceny incidents were actually larceny from motor vehicle. And as we take a closer look at larceny from motor vehicle, we see a slight increase over last year, but a significant decrease from 2017 and pretty flat over the last year. During the past two years, we have consistently reiterated lock it or lose it. I've come before our council and spoken about that campaign as well. And what it basically does is it addresses the need to secure vehicles and to remove the valuables that are left inside, and removing them from being visible from others. While we don't have a significant increase in 2019, this is a constant message that we repeat and reiterate over and over and over again to our community. This is often one of the most preventable areas when you talk about property crime, but it's also one of the most significant drivers when you talk about property crime. So that speaks also for the need to simply, all of us, to just double-check our vehicles, make sure that they're locked, and make sure that we've removed those valuables. Of the vehicles broken into, 7.2% of those vehicles were entered by an actual window being broken. So that's a small percentage when you look at that number of vehicles broken into. That means we're literally leaving our cars unlocked and unsecured. Taking a closer look at larceny from motor vehicle, as I've come before council several times to talk about our firearm violence, I can't not speak on the number of firearms that are stolen from vehicles. Of the 2,547 vehicles broken into, we obviously continue to see firearms left in vehicles and most often in unlocked vehicles. So as you can see, the number of firearms stolen increased as the number recovered specifically in these areas is 48. And I'll talk a little more about weapons that are stolen and recovered, but the 48 is specific to those weapons that were stolen out of vehicles. The bigger story here is specific to the reality that stolen guns from vehicles were not all recovered. So that means that there are still some that are out there. And we do come across them very often in other crimes. So as we talk about lock it or lose it, we always have to continue to speak on this issue as well. Other firearms concerns are addressed in the firearms violence reduction strategy, along with our continued efforts to address responsible gun ownership with those owners who possess those weapons. And unfortunately, we see these guns, there again, showing up in other crimes, usually crimes against person, robberies, and robberies as well. It is also important to note that we seized or collected as evidence 986 firearms in 2019 citywide. And that's a 10% increase over 2018 in terms of overall recovery of firearms. Looking at gun violence in 2019, the last slide segues into this topic. We saw an average of basically 10 people shot per month. Forty-six of the incidents occurred between 10 o'clock and 3 o'clock in the morning. And 40% of the incidents occurred on Saturday and Sunday. A considerable amount of this activity is related to situations evolving from nightlife and club life experience. While some of these incidents occur at the specific club location, a considerable number of these occurrences evolve after individuals are leaving the club. And the shootings occur at other locations, roadways and at other venues. Taking a further look at homicide, and this too is an area that I've come before council previously to speak on. As you can see, we had more victims than we had incidents in 2019. Of the incidents, the 29, we had two were double homicides. Two were the result of domestic violence, and 19 of the homicides involved the use of a firearm. In 15 of these incidents, the victim knew the suspect. Further data that's reflected in 2018 information, cities with populations between 250,000 to 499,000, their homicide rate was 10.9 per 100,000. And the green bar shows that in Raleigh, 2019, our homicide rate per 100,000 is 6.5. Calls for service, although the numbers have gone down, we are still rather busy. 2019, we responded to 332,037 calls for service. And that ranges from a simple talk with an officer to a very, a more complex time-induced type call made by members of the community, as well as officer-initiated calls for service. And overall, the initiated calls for service, self-initiated calls for service decreased by 4.73%. And likewise, calls for service for 911 decreased by 5% as well. I presented this chart earlier in the year, and so the actual call types have changed from what we saw earlier. Interestingly enough, last year I was presenting those, that data, and the calls for service in the district really reflected disturbances in all of the districts, at least in one of the topics. So as you can see, at the end of the year, talk with an officer, motor vehicle crashes were common in all six districts, with the three areas of concerns ranging from alarms in the more commercially populated areas, with a combination of disturbances, noise, and domestic complaints in the other districts combined. So you're looking at a combination of police service-type calls and quality of life-type calls. The calls for service are generated through the computer-aided dispatch, meaning that the call comes in, dispatch pretty much types the call in and dispatches the officer to it. Rarely does the call change, because dispatch typically will glean and gather enough of that information on the front end to dispatch it accordingly. Additionally, while we've seen assault incidents in our city increased by 5% this year, what you also see in this list here is that the more violent categories are not resounding calls for service in our city. But just as important, we continue to educate and deploy the proactive steps in order to decrease these numbers as well. Traffic stops, we came to you with RTI earlier in the year, and we will come back later on in the year to present traffic stop data. But I did want to just cover some of this briefly. We had 43,503 traffic stops in 2019, and that is an increase of 3.7% over last year. As you know, with the growth in our city comes many motorists on the roadways to and through the city as well. The breakdown of specific data regarding motorists, as I mentioned, will come a little later in the year as we will follow the methodology presented and shared by RTI. In summary, this slide and the previous slide really do speak to two things. One, traffic stops are up, however, charges are down, and warnings, both written and verbal, have increased as well. And I want to share with you arrest data also. This particular chart reflects physical and citations in terms of overall charges and arrests. So there are several points to note with regards to this particular slide that I do want to highlight as well. While adult charges have increased, which primarily means that people have received more than one charge during an arrest, you also see a total number of charges by citation, which were reduced by 1.9%. And then the total number of adults physically arrested was reduced by 2.1%. And there was also a decrease in the overall number of adults issued citations by 1.9% as well. We often hear that police are the catalyst and the pipeline to- We often hear that police are the catalyst in the pipeline to prison, and I want to speak briefly to the number of juveniles cited under the age of 18. And as you can see there, that number in our department has been reduced by 18.9%. And the number of those that were physically arrested under the age of 18 was reduced by 17.3%. It is important to also note that North Carolina enacted the Raise the Age law this year. However, it did not take effect until December 1st, 2019. So these numbers are not causal factors by the new law that was recently introduced. This is reflective of the work that's been initiated by the men and women of the department, as well as working with many of those resources that I had previously mentioned, obviously the criminal justice system, but also nongovernmental entities and agencies as well, and other partnerships that we have formed in order to impact and make a difference in this arena. What this has afforded is literally alternatives and diversionary opportunities that really afford a young person greater opportunities to grow, to learn, and hopefully correct the behavior in question. And we're doing this through opportunities that are outside the traditional criminal justice process. Raise the Age now obviously is in full implementation, so we hope to see these numbers to be even more significant in 2020. In talking about our youth and some of the work that we've done, I did want to take a moment to just thank the many partners that we do have in impacting this particular area and making a difference in our community. And of course, this is a very small, small list compared to the number of partners that we have. So collectively, I just want to say thank you to all those partners. To close on a more positive note, this really is a perfect introduction into the ways that we have infused the various partnerships in making that impact. And it's important to speak about them because they do reflect private, corporate, public, faith, educational, and those nongovernmental entities who are eager to sit at the table and have been at the table as we address these issues involving our youth. Contrary to what we hear about the pipeline to prison, many of our efforts support the data that's previously mentioned by capturing just a few of these photos. I could go on for slides with photos and just showing you the relationships, but the work that's being done on so many levels, both formal and informal, as it relates to the staff and to our other partners. We mentor, we teach, we coach, we play, we employ, we demonstrate leadership, and we offer those opportunities to positively impact the youth. And not just during the summer, but we have programs that are year-round. You heard me come before the council last year, speaking about the 2019 Youth Summit, where we had the hashtag #WeHearYouth. It's that time again for us to begin to launch the work for later on in the year. But we saw over 250 youth assemble with a desire to learn and with the motivation to be the best that they can be, which was really and truly a significant feat for our department, as well as those partners who brought themselves to the table. And with significant support from our lead sponsor, our city of Raleigh was that sponsor. So once again, thank you for your support. So as we be... I moved a little too fast. Yep, trying to go back. Nope, I got it. I think I got it. There's only a few slides left, so I apologize. Okay. So we are currently working on the 2020 Youth Summit. We are looking for as many sponsors and dynamic presenters as we did this year, with hopes that we can surpass the 250 count that we had of our youth. And we're looking forward to that partnership with our greater community as well. We've set the date, September 26th, back at the McKimmon Center. As we move forward to encourage, to educate, and empower, we are excited about it. So I'll close now with the affirmation that I started with, that Raleigh is indeed a safe place to live, work, play, and learn, with the Research Triangle Park just up the road. And I'm taking all this from the Downtown Raleigh Alliance report that they released. Having the one-tier research university here in the heart of our city, a walk score of 96, the tremendous investment in infrastructure and growth throughout our city, from parks to 112 miles of greenway, along with many other accolades proclaimed by the city, to include the most recent Numbio's ranking on quality of life. We're keenly aware of the priorities that are placed on our department, and not only on our department, but many times those same priorities are placed by our department to ensure the safety of our city as a whole. And while the data is presented, it is important to note that as chief, we also recognize that even with accolades, quality of life, real or perceived safety is often premised on the perception and an individual's perception as well. So we will continue to focus on those priorities in maintaining a safe city while cultivating traditional and non-traditional relationships, reassessing our focus throughout data-driven analysis, and seeking opportunities of innovation that stand to further our efforts to ensure the city is and remains a great place to live, work, play, and learn. In closing, I cannot stand here today without saying, we are all, as a community, dealing with a very difficult time with regards to the officer-involved shooting last week. So we are working, obviously, with our officer and his family, and we have staff that will provide assistance with the family of Mr. Collins as well. So as a community, as the police chief, it is my hope that we can continue to heal and move forward. Are there any questions?
I have two questions. One is related to gun violence, and you mentioned clubs. When I chaired the Law and Public Safety Committee, now feels many years ago, we actually shut down two clubs where there were a number of homicides and violent incidents. Do we have any repeat offenders that we should be having serious discussions with?
There is a lot of work when we are analyzing not just the data of the incident itself, but where the event stemmed from. So we do work very closely with our city attorney's office and other personnel within the organization, within city, the city departments, as well as with our other law enforcement agencies beyond the city of Raleigh. So we do take a very critical look at those organizations or those businesses that are creating the nuisance.
Okay, and then related to guns and cars, do we have discussions with people when their gun is stolen? I mean, why do people leave guns in cars? And why do they leave guns in unlocked cars? Help me understand this because I don't get it.
I don't either. But, you know, people are human, and we are a busy community. So some of it, I think, is that we get caught up in the rush of, I've got to run into the house, I've got to run into the business, I've got to do this. We forget to lock that door. These are really crimes of opportunity and can very easily be prevented. But it happens. And it's not, you know, it's not every car that a gun is stolen out of. It's laptops, it's purses, it's coins in the console. It's the spare key that allows the car to be stolen at that time. So, you know, if we could just all, I think, just simply, and this is probably on its most basic level, slow down for a moment and make sure that we are protecting those things that we treasure, our car and all that's in it. And take that moment to just, you know, hit that button and make sure, if you've got the capability on your vehicle, just make sure that you hear it locked. But it's, I just think that it's just the human element of being caught up in the busyness of life.
Startling. Anybody else have any questions? Councilor Branch?
First of all, thank you, Chief, for your work, and thank you for everyone under your command, for your service to the community. Two questions, actually, for when you come back with your traffic stop information. I was wondering if it will be broken down by district?
We did that before.
Okay. And then the other question is, can, will it be broken down compared, I guess, interstate stops versus everything else? And I'm just putting those two categories, because I know you all patrol 40 and I'm 40 a lot, too. And I know sometimes in traffic stops, people, some of those are people being somewhat transient.
We can look at that.
I don't know if you have it, but...
I don't think that we have it specifically.
Okay.
We'll have to look to see if we can. Those locations would be encompassed in a district breakdown.
Right.
But also understand, not all of the interstates, not all parts of the interstates are within city limits.
Correct, correct. And otherwise, I say thank you all for your continued work with our youth. I look forward to myself and council working with you all more and bringing this city closer together.
Thank you.
A quick question for this council, or maybe just a note. And Councilman Branch, maybe you can help me with the specifics if Chief Duck Brown can't. I believe last year that from our council contingency fund, we were a sponsor of the Youth Summit, and so want us to consider thinking about that again this year, whenever the time may be appropriate, and whatever amount that might be.
Thank you.
Well, not whatever amount.
Whatever the amount was last year.
Well, let's just consider when we get the ask, and it's something I look forward to continuing to do and continuing to support.
And if you want a great speaker, get Lavelle Moton. Oh, the coach is, he made me ball the last time I'd heard him speak. He is one of the most inspirational people when he gets behind that podium. So just a little suggestion there.
I've heard him. He's also in high demand.
I'll call him.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, thank you. The next item is a brief presentation on a sidewalk petition, Rembert Drive, Section B. This follows the petition process, but there's two separate projects that are going on. And so Jason Myers with Transportation just wanted to take a moment and explain that to you before asking for you to authorize the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Jason Myers in the Department of Transportation. Usually this is on the, this sort of thing is on the consent agenda, but staff has received some feedback and expect that council may have also received some feedback and some confusion, there being two petitions, both on Rembert Drive, and having two different courses of action for those recommended. Quick overview of the program for sidewalk petitions. They are issued upon request of basically anybody, one property owner, or one property, one vote. No assessments for sidewalks, but a street must have curb and gutter to be eligible for the program. Citizens vote on these by mail or online, and that their threshold for us to bring it to you as a successful petition is to be a majority of those who vote. And that if a property doesn't have a vote, then that is not counted as that percentage. So this map shows three different sidewalk petitions in the Brookhaven neighborhood. Earlier this afternoon, you authorized a public hearing for the successful Brookhaven Drive sidewalk project. That petition was successful. This item is for the Rembert Part B petition that was successful, but simultaneously, there was a unsuccessful sidewalk petition for Part A. And part of the reason to bring this request is a part of the city manager's report, is to make sure that if council is thinking about doing something on Part A, that we properly notify people who might be affected by that. So a quick scope on the Part B project. This is in Council District E, about a half a mile of sidewalk, recommended to be generally five foot, generally three feet from the curb, from Winthrop Drive to Brookhaven Drive. And Brookhaven Drive is the location of one of the entrances to York Elementary School. The estimated construction cost of this is more than one and a quarter million dollars. It's a very expensive project because of the length, because of the right-of-way impacts, and because of some of the grades in the area. And again, no assessments for sidewalk projects. For that petition, we got pretty good participation. 90% of the properties voted, and of the folks who voted, 75% said they did want this project for Rembert Part B. And Rembert Park A, a very similar scope of project, about the same length, probably a little bit more expensive, but it's also a little bit longer. This goes from Winthrop Drive to Glenwood Avenue, and if you want, I can pull the map back up. Again, no assessments. But on this one, on similarly high participation, we had a minority of folks wanting this project. 39% said yes, and 61% said no. So given that it's a very expensive project with very low level of support, staff isn't recommending that we move forward with that at this time, and that our request is to authorize a public hearing for Part B. But if there is some consideration of Part A, we can certainly notify residents of Part A about this public hearing and communicate this public hearing however council wishes. Can I answer any questions?
I was, for me, I mean, I think it kind of is self-explanatory, but I was going to lean to our council, district councilmen on thoughts for this one.
I'm prepared to make a motion to support the staff's recommendation, whenever y'all are ready.
Do I have a second?
I don't think you did it yet.
Oh.
I moved to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, regarding the Rembert Drive B sidewalk petition.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so that means A would not be included, and I guess we'll do a missing middle years later.
I've noticed a lot of people leaving and coming back. I'm going to ask that we take like just a quick break. Potty break. See ya.
Okay.[1674.88]
Okay.
Next we have the report and recommendation of Historic Resources and Museum Program Advisory Board.
Good afternoon. I am Claire Bass. I am the Vice Chair of the Historic Resources and Museums Advisory Board. I appreciate being able to give you a brief update this afternoon about the work of our past year and to present our work plan for fiscal year 20. I first want to thank the mayor and council for your support and your interest in our work and in particular your attendance at our events and your willingness to help. It's most appreciated. I want to start by giving a few highlights of fiscal year 19. We had some really wonderful successes in programs. The continued popularity of the Historic Resources and Museums Program sites, events and programs. This past year, we served almost 1 million visitors. Our largest growth in visitation was in our Historic Sites section compromising Mordecai Historic Park, the Tucker House, the Borden Building and the Raleigh Trolley Program. Historic Sites drew 56,289 visitors in 19, which is a 34% increase from fiscal year 18. We also, as you know, successfully reopened Moore Square as well as the Moore Square Visitor Center. And I won't go into all the wonderful things at Moore Square, but I hope you have all been there and enjoyed just a really beautiful facility. We also successfully published another 5,000 objects from the HRM Artifact Collection online for the public to view. And we finalized the Raleigh Historic Resources and Museum Strategic Plan. This plan identified unique characters and strengths of our heritage ecosystem as well as established strategic goals for the HRM program. Looking ahead to 2020, I first want to just mention that we will be opening a 19th Amendment exhibit at the City of Raleigh Museum in August. So we're very excited about that. There are also several issues we continue to view as horizontal for the HRM program, the PRC Department and the City of Raleigh, which are reflected in our work plan. We hope the city will continue to consider a standalone visitor center that will support tourism by promoting all the wonderful things that are to see and do in Raleigh. And because Raleigh is growing so fast, we believe a standalone visitor center would serve residents and visitors as well. We hope to continue to work towards a resolution of private ownership of our artifact collections. The city does not own the majority of the historic objects in our collections and this complicates decisions about interpretation and stewardship. We also hope to continue to play a role in the development of the Dix property. Both the property and the buildings at Dix are rich in history and we believe we can be a constructive voice in the process. Finally, the HRM program continues to be a part of Park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Department. We have enjoyed great support from this department over the years and hope we will continue to be included in future PR, CR projects and initiatives. So in closing, I would ask the council to approve the Historic Resources and Museums Advisory Board 2020 Annual Work Plan as submitted.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
We deeply appreciate it and thanks for being here today. Okay. Next we have the report and recommendation of the Economic Development and Innovation Committee.
None.
The Growth and Natural Resources Committee?
I have the opposite of none. The Growth and Natural Resources, Resources Committee met on Tuesday, January 28th to discuss three items. First, for the Brentwood Estate Sewer Improvement, Improvement Project, we recommend to the council that the project proceed as designed. This was a split vote for the committee, but after a thorough presentation from Raleigh Water staff and recognizing that this item has been debated by council for quite some time, and the committee agreed it was time to move forward with this project in a manner that adheres to our design standards for such projects and best protects our environment overall. I want to thank our staff and the residents of Brentwood for their continued interest in this project and their sacrifice. I now move that the Brentwood Estate Sewer Improvement Project move forward as designed.
All in favor?
I would like to make some comments if I may.
Of course, Councilor Cox.
Thank you. This project is in my district and affects residents and property owners on Ingram Drive. At the GNR meeting, citizens came to speak, however, the committee opted to not take public comments. One of the homeowners came because the project will destroy her backyard and yards of her neighbors. Another person came because he owns a large parcel of land behind these homes and has offered to allow the city to move the sewer line onto his property at little or no cost to the city, a generous offer to help his neighbors. Ingram Drive has a rich environment consisting of mature trees and diverse wildlife. In past years, bald eagles have nested in one of the trees behind their homes. The environment respects no boundaries established by humans. The mature trees and wildlife exist primarily in the backyards of the homes on Ingram Drive and it is that environment that will be destroyed by this project. I cannot support this project as it is currently designed. I do believe there are engineering alternatives and mitigations that we should continue to pursue. It is 2020 and it is time we made extra efforts for our environment and I will vote no on this motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Cox. There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seven, one vote. Councilor Stewart?
Yep. The second item that the committee considered last week was the city's process to allow neighborhood conservation overlay districts, or NCODs. The council has referred, had referred this item to GNR so that we could take a deeper dive into this tool that exists in the city's UDO as an option for neighborhoods to request that the city impose a zoning overlay district intended to preserve established neighborhoods by regulating built environmental characteristics such as lot size and frontage, building setback and building height. The committee heard a presentation from planning and development staff that included an analysis of NCODs' impact on preserving housing affordability and allowing diverse housing options. In summation, staff's report showed that while NCODs do little to preserve affordability, they also do not prevent diverse housing types. The presentation was informative and I would encourage the rest of the council to review the staff report that is in today's agenda. And at this time, the committee wishes to report this item back out to the council with no recommended action, recognizing that our collective time is best spent focused on tools proven to build an abundance of diverse housing choices.
Any questions? Do we, do we need a motion on this if you're just reporting out? Yes. We do? Okay. Councilor Stewart, is that a motion then?
So moved. Yes. Yes, that's a motion.
Councilor Knight seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. And the final item that the GNR committee discussed last week was related to building height. As the council will recall, we recently adopted a new ordinance TC 1319 that modified the standards for building height in mixed-use zoning districts. This ordinance was authorized after a request and petition of citizens was received by the city council. This ordinance modified the heights for buildings that are seven stories and above. When the Planning Commission reviewed the request, they offered recommendations to modify the height in feet for the four and five-story height districts. Yep. Those recommended changes were not included in the adopted ordinance, but the council referred the topic of building height for four and five-story buildings to committee. At our meeting last week, we received a detailed presentation of the adopted ordinance and heard more about the Planning Commission's recommendations related to four and five-story heights. We had another split vote on this issue, but the committee recommended, and I would make a motion, that the council authorize staff to draft a text change setting maximum heights for buildings four stories at 68 feet and five stories at 80 feet and that the text change go to the Planning Commission for the review and recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just as clarification, this was what originally came to the council?
It was part of the Planning Commission's report.
Yeah.
But not part of our hearings, so we moved it into committee.
Okay, yes. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Seven, two, one.
Madam Mayor, for this one, I will ask staff, I supported it to move to the text change phase, but if staff can show some visuals of our current code and the new, so we can have an idea of what this looks like, it would be helpful.
What staff has said in the past is allowing this height will actually allow for better design. And so if we can have better looking buildings, that is always, I think you heard me last week when I talked about great design, great design, great design. We can encourage that. I think that that will, will be good for our city.
So I have one just announcement. Finally, I want to announce that GNR will have an additional meeting this month on Monday, February 10th at 4:00 PM. Unfortunately for us, I understand that the Board of Adjustment is already scheduled to meet in council chambers on that day, so the GNR committee will meet in room 305. We will discuss possible changes to Chapter 9 of the UDO, which addresses natural resource protection. The council referred this item to GNR at the January 21st council meeting. We also plan to meet as scheduled on Tuesday, February 25th, but I will wait until our next council meeting to announce which items we plan to cover. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have the report and recommendation of the Safe, Vibrant and Healthy Community Committee. We did meet. We will have two items coming to the full council on February 18th. Staff is preparing two text changes to the residential infill development related to the two items that the Home Builders Association brought forward to us at public comment. They needed the two extra weeks to just get it right. Like, let's not rush it, take the time to get it right. So that will be coming to the full council. We also discuss short-term rentals and we'll continue that discussion. You might recall that we are having a special meeting after the eight, our meeting on the 18th. So whenever that gets done, I guess we can calendar that for four o'clock, fingers crossed. And we, we will just continue that discussion on short-term rentals. Thank you. And now we have the report and recommendation of the Transportation and Transit Committee.
Um, no report. We do have a meeting scheduled for February 27th to continue our conversation on micro mobility.
Okay. All right. Now we have a report from the mayor and city council. Councilor Branch, you were not here last time and that threw me off. So, we start with you. Remember, we're taking turns.
Okay. Thank you. Couple of things I want to mention is first, on February 29th, we will have the mayor's unity breakfast and African-American celebration at the Raleigh Convention Center from 10 until 3:00 PM. Okay. Good memory. So I ask everyone, please come out. Normally it's the mayor unity breakfast is, you know, kind of smaller, intimate. We're making this a little bigger, more informative and also celebrating history of Raleigh and Raleigh African-American community. Also, I will ask that if our city manager can get with the county manager as well as the school board superintendent and work, if council approves, on working on a joint meeting or retreat for us to look at some items around growth and housing. One thing that we're hearing a lot in our school system is, you know, lack of diversity in our schools. You know, and they're talking about schools being segregated. Well, one thing I've always have said up here, as far as our housing, we can't build an economically segregated community. So I think if we can have, and that, this is something that maybe a representative from the council as well as those bodies get together with, and give you all direction on a couple of agenda items to make the meeting specific, it would be good. And I don't think this has ever been done where our three bodies have met. I know the school board and the county commissioners meet, but I know with Raleigh being such a large part of Wake County, I think it's important that as a council, elected officials, if maybe we have a public meeting, a public retreat in a sense to discuss some items would be helpful.
Certainly. So I wasn't aware of that particular idea and so I think there's some complications to that.
And you can help.
Right. So perhaps, maybe we should get together and talk about that a little bit. Part of what we'll need to think through is I think there's some protocol related to the mayor and council asking other elected officials to participate in a joint retreat.
Right.
And so just to be clear, myself asking the school superintendent or the county manager to have a retreat.
If we need the mayor to make that request.
So we need to probably work on that a little bit. And I'm happy to reach out to both the county manager and school superintendent, but it probably needs some.
That's fair.
Work at the elected official level too.
The mayor and I briefly had a conversation about it and mayor, if you could reach out to.
I will.
And then we can, once she makes that connection, then I guess we'll go from there.
Let's, why don't, why don't we work on it a little bit and then maybe bring it back to a future council meeting to just, to talk through that a little bit more about how that might work and then some ideas for an agenda. How about that?
And again, the overall intent of me making this, ask this request is for us to try to find some grounds to help build our community holistically.
Well, and Councilor Branch, one of the things I brought up. Well, and Councilor Branch, one of the things I brought up during the very first meeting was how we could all use our underutilized land and property to, for affordable housing purposes. So that is one of the items that, if there is a, a meeting, which I hope there will be, that that will be part of the agenda.
So if, if that's the case, we were kind of scrambling to talk to the staff from the county and the schools on that topic, so maybe we can put a hold on that and see if this would be brought together.
Oh, you can, you can still scramble.
We can still scramble. So, I guess that's what, yeah, so why don't we work on it a little bit?
Okay.
How about that? Let's work on it a little bit.
So, is everybody good with that, though, because, do we need a vote?
No. What I would suggest is maybe we work it a little bit, and then bring back something more specific in writing, and then the council could take some action, would be my suggestion.
All right. Councilor Branch, I think that's a very good idea.
All right, thank you. And the last thing is.
Mayor, could I, sorry, Councilor Branch, I wanted to just add on that. In, in putting together these plans, and if it's okay with Councilor Branch, I'd like to see park planning around school properties as part of the agenda for this discussion. I've seen this work tremendously with the Riverbend Park. I was a member of the Parks Board and participated in that leadership group that included not only the school system, Wake County Community College, the private developer that was developing a neighborhood nearby. I think this kind of coordinated planning holds a lot of promise for efficient use of land, so if, if there's room in this conversation, and you're all right with it, I'd like to have park planning on the, on the agenda for this.
Item we could consider for the, of the agenda, as we look at it, and then we'll see where it falls.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the last thing, I recently attended the Campo joint meeting, that's Capital, that's the Metropolitan's planning organizations, including Campo, Durham Chapel Hill, as well as Johnson County. It was a great meeting, and one thing I can say is that your municipalities are really working on ways to improve transportation regionally. There's a lot of conversation on BRT, there's conversation BRT, Bus Rapid Transit in Chapel Hill area, as well as we work here in Raleigh. So, there's a lot of great conversation continuing on commuter rail. I know there was some information in the news. I look forward to our planning boards and our MOPs, and as well as Go Raleigh and Go Triangle, working jointly together. So I just want to give that update, that I enjoy representing the city at that meeting as we talked about moving forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Branch. Councilor Melton?
Yeah, I just have one thing. I'm the liaison for our council to the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Commission, and as part of that work, I've met with representatives from Oaks and Spokes, which is a bicycle advocacy nonprofit group, and I asked them for some ideas for low-hanging fruit of what we can do to further their cause or mission, and they said that one thing is, is that for business owners who want to request bike parking in the public right-of-way, that there's not a clear procedure. I asked staff to look into it, and we have a procedure, but not really. It's a flow chart. It's nothing that's written in writing, or I guess the chart's in writing, but I don't know. Either way, I'd like, with council's permission, to authorize staff to actually write out the procedure in a way that it's easy to understand, and that we can promote to business owners if they want bike parking to be considered to be installed in the public right-of-way.
Okay.
I, yes.
Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I forgot, I have one more request, if, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
A yield.
Pedestrian safety at Wilmington and Hargett Street has come up a number of times. If staff can give a report back on what we're doing to try to improve that, and I know we've had some accident recently on Capitol Boulevard, if we can just get some information on for that one, was that, my question for that one was, at the intersection or was it midway? Because I think we need to find ways to help alleviate some of those midway crossings if that's occurring. But the main thing is Wilmington Street and Hargett Streets downtown Raleigh.
I think I've been talking about the mid-crosswalk at, on Wilmington Street near Hargett for six years now. So thank you for bringing that up. Okay, Councilor Melton, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Cox?
Just a couple of things. Well, first of all, Mr. Branch mentioned the concern that I had about the continued pedestrian accidents on Capitol Boulevard. People ask me about it, and I keep giving them the same answer, that it's a state road, and there's really a limit to what we can do, but if we can come up with some ideas, that would be great. The only other concern I have is that I do have a request from residents in Wakefield plantation. They're concerned that the Greenway, the segment of Greenway that goes through Wakefield is under disrepair, and they would be interested in having that repaired. Otherwise, I don't have any concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Bufkin?
I have a report.
Councilor Knight?
There are concerns that the mayor and the city manager are not aware of already. I'm sorry, not aware of, no concerns that you're not aware of.
Right. Okay.
Okay, I have several items. First, I would like to appoint Jonathan Melton as the liaison to our sister cities. No one had, had, well, that was a vacancy, so Councilor Melton has expressed some interest. So, consider that you are now officially the liaison to sister cities.
Is New York City a sister city, or?
No.
No, it's a little, it's a little more exotic than that. The second thing I want to bring up, one of the, for some reason, this got left off of our rules of decorum. If someone wishes to speak during public comment, there is one limitation. They cannot speak on an item that's scheduled for public hearing. We had that discussion, was in the original proposal that was brought forward and somehow didn't make it to the, to the full council. So I would like to, well, if the city attorney would like to add anything to that.
Yes, I just wanted to explain that this issue, the question had come up, and if you have a public hearing that's required by statute, there is a notification requirement, there's a mailing requirement, and a publication requirement that tells people exactly when that public hearing is going to be held, and it's printed on the agenda. So if you're actually hearing comment at a different time, then I think there are concerns that you have not necessarily met the notice provisions, because people will come when they believe the hearing will be held. And we won't be able to do that if there's no notice that they'll speak on that at public comment. The other thing is the code requires that each side be given the same amount of time, so that's another legal requirement on a public hearing proponents and opponents. And so, that is easily controlled during the public hearing period, and if public comment were opened up to have, we wouldn't know how many people were coming, how many people were going to speak on one side or the other, that would be very difficult, if not impossible, to comply with that rule as well. Now, the option is, if council wants to, they do have the ability to increase the public com, I mean, the public, sorry, public hearing time on any particular case. So if, in fact, they wanted to hear more than eight minutes or more people, then you would expand the time during the noticed, printed, mailed, designated time.
And so that can't happen at the table? It can only happen during the, the notice period?
Oh, no, you can do that from the table.
Okay.
If you want to.
Okay.
That's within your discretion.
Okay. All right.
A question about that, if I may?
Yes.
Do we have any First Amendment issues with this? Because often, people will submit a request for a citizen's petition, and they won't actually clearly explain why they're coming to speak. They'll just say it's an issue that is of a public concern or a concern of themselves, and then when they get here, and if they want to talk to a zoning case that is coming up for hearing, can we stop them legally?
I would say that because the statutes are very clear, and the code is very clear about speaking at a public hearing, that probably there'd be more legal issues if you were holding a public hearing in theory at a time that wasn't noticed. I think that if you add something to the signup procedures to make that clear, that that's fine, and I also would say that that's a common practice across the state with cities and counties to make sure that they use their public hearing time for that item, as opposed to moving it to a time where other people who are expecting to come to the public hearing don't miss hearing the comments, because they've come at the designated public hearing time, if that makes sense.
Can I just add something? Because a council member Bufkin and I are the, the ones who drafted the, the rules for public comment, and it's something we honestly forgot to include. I will say that having spoke to the city attorney, it's already the law. The law is you have to notice for public hearing, you have to provide the same amount of time to each side. So I don't think we actually have to put in our public comment procedure the fact that if you show up for public comment, you cannot talk about something for public hearing. I think that's already the law. I think putting it in our procedure just provides some transparency and gives folks a heads up. Other municipalities do have it written in their rules, so I don't think legally we need to add it to our rules. I think it's better to add it to our rules, so there's no confusion, and there's no question of bias, it's just, it's just what it is.
So.
I would add the applicant, too. If, for the rezoning case, has a unique interest in hearing what that people are saying about their case, and so they often hire, you know, experts and attorneys to come as well, and so having that notice time to know when their case is going to be heard, I think is, is a good idea for that reason as well.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion, then, to add this to our, our decorum rules that are publicly shared, so it appears transparent, and the issue is specifically that if they wish to, if a resident wished to speak during public comment, they cannot speak on an item that is scheduled for a public hearing later that, or that night.
Or that they should speak on the public hearing.
Speak during the public hearing.
On the public hearing item, so that everyone has noticed that that's when that item will be heard.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to vote no, largely because, I mean, this is what happened with the issue about addressing city council members, is that, that was law, and, and we put it into the rules of decorum, and then we retracted it. And, and so I'm going to lean on the side of freedom of speech. I think, obviously, when someone comes to speak to us as a citizen petition, we recognize that's not a hearing at that time, and, and I really think people should be able to be free to speak on whatever issue or topic that they, that they wish to speak on. So I will vote no.
Okay. All, it's a seven one vote. Okay, thank you. And the third item I have, you know, I've read the article in the News and Observer, very well-done article on our, some of our low-budget, high-crime hotels, and there was one thing that really spoke to me, was the woman who was living in a hotel with her family. She lost her job, was on disability, and obviously could afford to pay the daily rate, but couldn't afford to muster up a first-month rent and a security deposit. And it occurred to me that this is probably a far-reaching issue. So I would like to, get ready, Larry, I would like to propose that the city establish what I'm going to call the Compassion Fund. I would like Housing in Neighborhoods, and to work with Oak City Cares, to kind of come up with a plan that makes sense to distribute money to people in these circumstances. I'm going to ask that the city seed the fund with $25,000 in council contingency, and at some point, just a warning to the private sector, they're going to be getting some phone calls to also contribute. But I just, it breaks my heart to think that people are living in hotels and paying very high rates monthly because they can't afford to pull together the payments necessary. I also believe that this should be coordinated, and I, and I think that this is where Oak City Cares comes in as well, with some of the current organizations who are working with people in this situation. I do not want this to be a fund that is government-driven. I want it to be seeded somewhere in a nonprofit, so the response rate can be quicker, and maybe we can help some people caught in these circumstances. So, that's a very long motion, if somebody would like to second it.
I second the motion.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have maybe a potential friendly amendment. I went toward one of the shelters on Capitol Boulevard for women and children and families, and one issue that they have is that a lot of folks have housing choice vouchers, but there don't, there's not a place for them to be accepted. And I think one idea that other cities have worked with is incentivizing landlords to accept housing choice vouchers. So I, I'm wondering if that could be something that's pulled into this discussion with the Compassion Fund, or if it could be a separate discussion.
So, could we have that discussion when we meet with the county and the schools on, because that's an issue that involves the county as well, and I think one of the things that we have talked about is some type of educational campaign. You know, the other thing is when, when some of these nonprofits in the county are working with landlords, right now, they can command as much as they want, because there's a scarcity of housing. So, it's an educational process, but also if there can be supportive housing with some of these, you know, financial incentives built in, they might be more inclined to accept those. I think they're two separate issues for now, but I think that that's definitely something we need to talk about, and I would ask that we add that to the agenda.
Great.
Is that okay?
And I do believe it's a separate item, but also I think the Raleigh Housing Authority needs to be involved, because to receive a voucher, there's certain requirements a landlord has to meet, and that's governed by the housing authority.
Mm-hmm. So that's the voucher discussion?
Separate.
Okay, yes.
I support this fund, so thank you.
Okay. So do we have a vote, can we, can we have a vote, please? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Forgot.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, I'm getting there. Um, Councilor Stewart?
I just wanted to recognize that it is still winter, and it is 70 degrees outside, and even though my children and I got to chat with Mr., Sir Walter Wally the other day, who told us there would be six more weeks of winter, I'm a little disappointed in him. So, maybe there will be five more weeks, and the children all let a wonderful chant of "Snow Day," because we have not had one yet, so.
[laughing]
Our fingers are crossed, but it was a really fun event led by the Science Museum, Natural Science Museum, and we got to welcome their brand-new director as well, who's just in, in Raleigh this past week, so.
So was that the most fun your kids have had, attending one of your city council duties?
I think it may have been. Their classmates were all like, "You got it wrong." But, we're good, we're good. They had so much fun.
That's awesome. I'm glad you could do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Martin?
Have you all seen the GIF of the, 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 what is it, the groundhog? A groundhog that bites the mayor on the ear? Highly recommended. Yeah.
No, I don't want to see that. Thank you very much.
You might have PTSD. Okay, so I just, I have one thing that has a number of motions attached to it. So Raleigh has seen exponential growth in recent years, and I don't think that it's news to any of us sitting at this table, that we constantly top many best-of lists year after year. And yet, as our city has grown and adapted to the needs of our changing population, our tools and strategies for engagement have largely stayed the same insofar as it relates to what the city council itself controls. As we start a new decade and look to tackle the most difficult challenges our city has ever faced, it is ever apparent to me that we must reinvent and reinvest in where we show up, how we show up, and for whom we show up. Further, we must actually build processes and commit to systems that work for all of our residents. We need a city where all are able to participate, where each resident knows that their voice is valued and heard. In essence, what I'm trying to say is that we need a functioning inclusionary democracy, which sounds really simple, right? Today, I hope to start this journey with you all. It will not be perfect, it will not be linear, and it won't be fast. It will not rely on in-person meetings, nor will it rely solely on new-fangled apps or new tech. We will have to meet our residents exactly where they are. We will have to. We will have to show up in places where city councilors simply have never, ever been. We will have to think in ways we have never thought and challenge one another to be more creative, to be more inclusive, and to be more intentional in our work and in our policymaking. But together, and with the help of our incredible city staff, the energy and ideas of our talented residents, I know that we can add Raleigh to a new list. Most revolutionary community engagement process in the country. So as I pass out this first motion, I'll ask for silence so that my colleagues can reflect on the silence that has been present for far too long, in hopes that we do not focus on the few voices that will rise in opposition to the incredible work that we will embark on. So motion one. The knowledge, wisdom, and energy of our residents are among the city of Raleigh's most powerful assets. It is my belief that we seek to further update and modernize our community engagement process. Specifically, we seek to revolutionize our civic engagement process to ensure an inclusionary, participatory democracy, in which residents have multiple opportunities to engage as partners and co-creators of the future of our city. Therefore, I move that the city hire a consultant with expertise in this area to prepare recommendations geared toward improving the way we inspire, engage, interact with, and obtain input from all members of our community, with the ultimate goal of this effort being the creation of an office of city, of a city office of community engagement.
Second? There was a motion?
Yes.
And a second.
Second.
Very aspirational and inspirational. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to vote no to this, because this is the first I've heard of this, and what I'm seeing here is rather vague, and there are, I have a lot of questions. So before I vote in favor of something like this, I would like to get more information about the kind of consultant that we would be hiring, and exactly what the work plan would be.
Noted.
So for right now, I'm going to vote no on this.
So 7-1.
Okay. The citizen, motion two. The citizen advisory council framework was created by the Raleigh City Council in 1974, when the original CAC was appointed, in order for the city's energy and resources to be singularly focused on creating a new and more inclusive community engagement process. I also move that council's 1974 decision, which created the original RCAC, be repealed, as well as all other subsequent actions of any entity that have flowed from or which relied upon that 1974 action. And that all activities in city funding and staff support of the RCAC and its attendant 19 citizen advisory councils cease effective immediately. However, any rezoning case which has already been noticed and is scheduled to be heard at a CAC meeting may continue and be considered, but in no event may any rezoning case appear on a CAC agenda any later than 45 days from today. That was a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So for purposes of discussion, what you're saying is that CACs would continue to hear rezoning cases for the next 45 days?
Correct. They would have access to facilities, but...
Free?
Yes. But access, but staff support would, all other support would be pulled. But they would be able to hold any pre-scheduled meetings that are already on the dockets in the next 45 days.
So I have some reservations here.
Sure.
One, the CACs do a lot more than just, are here zoning cases. There's a lot of work they do in educating and engaging the community on affairs that, you know, representatives come and then they go out amongst the other residents that they live with. Parks and Rec, a lot of times, has worked with our CACs in forming framework for, you know, our, for master planning for our parks and engagement. This will be impacted. Our police department goes out and shares information as far as safety and events. Even our youth summit, they went there and shared that information to make sure the community is aware. So this in itself, I cannot support from the standpoint of, not just from a zoning standpoint, but there's a lot of other things that occur within the CAC that, you know, of those leaders of the CACs, you know, voted on by residents, you know, some I've agreed with, and some, they really tell me how much they love me every day. But regardless of that, they still have a right to have a voice.
Of course.
And, you know, and in lieu of us, I don't see what's replacing it. I know there's, we just voted to create a group and a task force with a consultant, but there's nothing in stone of what it looks like and what it is. So I cannot support this motion.
Heard.
I also will not support the motion. People have, know my history in this city. Most of the CACs are in District C and District B, where the most disadvantaged communities reside. This hurts our disadvantaged communities far more than any other communities within the city, and I will vote no.
Can I just, to address Counselor Branch's concern, first off, could we say, in addition to the rezoning, if a CAC has a meeting scheduled, that they can use facilities for the next 45 days?
I mean, you can say that. I mean, it's not going to...
But can I finish?
Go ahead.
So that would be one thing. The second thing would be that we commit to a participatory process for any future work that is done with the consultant. So, in other words, just to clarify, it's not a consultant just doing the work. This will be a participatory process that many people will be involved in, and will be very inclusionary. So can we add that as a friendly amendment?
So I got the first part about the public space. How would you like me to frame the second?
That we, that we ensure that there is a participatory process for work with the consultant to create a city office of community engagement. I might also add that current CAC staff be used to continue the work of the, into the community. So continued outreach. In other words, outreach doesn't stop happening.
Of course.
It continues.
And I think that's the idea. I guess my question is, I think that's more of a direction that we...
We let the consultant take, provide us with that direction?
Yes. Like, I think that is the overall intention of all of this, and I think what, the reason we're doing this, or that I've brought this forward, is for all of the reasons that have been expressed in terms of concern. Yes, the most disadvantaged communities are affected. The ways in which they're affected is that they don't have a voice at the table. And to assume that CACs have been the outlet for the disadvantaged communities is asinine and frankly insulting. And so we have to revolutionize the way that we're doing this. District C has an incredible CAC system, and that, I'm, in some ways, I'm envious of what Cory has. And I think that in each district, many of us can look and find CAC chairs and participants within our district that get the work and understand what we're trying to do. But it's the system as a whole that when we're looking at who shows up and what's happening, if it's the same 30 to 50 people at every meeting, that doesn't help advance the cause. Every single person that came up here today and spoke about the work that they're doing in their various departments said, "The city has grown, the city has grown. Here's how we're adapting to that change." And we're using the same exact system that was created 40-some years ago with no change. And we've had two mayors and councils try to make change, and they were not able to do so. So I think that it is a moral obligation for us to do what is right, and it is not easy. And as I said in the beginning, it's not simple. But we were elected, which means we cannot rely on these other organizations to have these meetings for us. And so by allowing the staff that currently support CACs to work with the city manager to figure out the best way possible to support the council, and being out in the community, finding out what the community's concerns are, and then making those meetings happen, that to me is true community engagement, while simultaneously, the long-term strategy is being built by the consultant.
Okay. Counselor Melton, thank you.
Thank you. I have questions. And not to minimize Counselor Branch's point, but to the actual business of the city, the rezoning process, what, after 45 days, how, how does the community, if we go forward this motion and the CACs are not going to exist in their current form, then how will the community engage with developers to have a voice about potential projects?
So when it comes to rezonings, it's already in the UDO that there is the required pre-design meeting with the community, and so that's an existing requirement. I have another upcoming motion that adds another, that would ask staff to draft another step, which would be a secondary community meeting between the developer and the area that is impacted by the community, by this development. And so I think that what we're trying to do is increase the amount of touch points that developers, especially on larger projects where the impact is so big, instead of just saying 500 feet, perhaps, 500 feet is, of people are noticed about the impact of the project, perhaps we increase that. My request is that staff take that and look at it, and look at other cities and what they do. But we have all seen many meetings that have worked well and have not worked well between developers, and I think that the community and developers would agree that having that second meeting before they get to planning commission and to council would be really beneficial for all groups. So that's...
So that's your, is that your next motion? Is that what you said? That's your next motion?
And I appreciate that. I think my question was, is do we have a mechanism in place to where notices can start, like...
No.
Yes, yes. So I can answer that question. I've been interested in it as well. So as Councilmember Martin mentioned, there is a pre-application meeting that every developer has to, or every applicant has to hold with notice to all property owners within 500 feet. The past council actually upped that from what I believe state law says is only 100 feet. So we do something bigger there. The application is then filed, which includes a report from the neighborhood meeting. City staff evaluates that application. The application is then sent to the planning commission, and a notice is a sent, and I didn't know this, a notice is sent ahead of time to property owners within 500 feet. Public hearing is held at planning commission, and then a recommendation is made to city council. Planning commission reports to city council, we set the public hearing date, and then again, there is a notice of the public hearing issued twice in the paper, posted on the subject property with a sign. And again, this will be the third time, the property owners within 500 feet are mailed to be notified about the public hearing that is at the city council. And then we hold the public hearing. So there are three touch points. And then I do think this next motion will be interesting to see what else city staff might come up with that could be an additional layer that gets folks to the table in talking to one another. I think that's one of the things that we've seen at CACs is, oftentimes, when a developer goes in to present their case, it immediately sets up a conversation, and not a conversation, it sets up a fight. And so how do we break out of that and have a conversation that is more solution-oriented? So I think that's something I'm really interested in, but I'm, this, it's, it's a lot.
Well, I have one more, and this pivots from that a little bit, but I think some of the most civically engaged people in our city participate in the CAC process. It's our chairs and the folks that are at the meetings. And so if we're looking at retooling this process then, and we're looking at the Office of Community Engagement, or what we authorized with the first motion, I'd like to make sure that, that we're keeping individuals who want to be included. Like, we can learn a lot from the folks who have been doing this work, and so I want to keep that, I want to work...
And engagement.
Yeah.
But specifically with the folks who are already doing the work and have been for decades.
Yeah. I think that that is both a place where the consultant would come in to understand the history and what has come of late, and how we've got to this point, is that historical analysis, I think, is super important. And I think that they have so much institutional knowledge about what works and what doesn't for various communities, and how we get folks to the table.
If I may. So my question...
Excuse me.
Well, my question is, why, why take this action today?
Counselor Cox.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, but why take this action today?
Counselor Cox, you weren't called to...
Why not, why not wait until we hear back from the consultant, and we hear back from the CACs, and we get more information?
Point of order. A point of order.
Cory, you were next.
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
And it's very similar, because the, one thing I've learned, and it's funny, you know, I was blessed, and I married up, and I married an educator. And one thing she's told me is that, she said one time, is that the universe does not allow a void. There's a void between an action taken now on this and the time we build something up. And the question is, what fills that void?
I hear the concern, and I challenge us to be the individuals that fill the void. We have to show up. That requires more work than any council has done previously to be in the community. It requires being in rooms that are uncomfortable to be in and having conversations that normally we weren't a part of, that were relayed to us via minutes from a meeting. But that's our job. And so until we get that long-term strategy back, and even once we do, I still think that we have to show up. But that, that is the job of a city council member. It's not to have a de facto group out there telling us what constituents think. It's, I want to hear from my people.
Well, I've attended the CAC, so, I mean, like I said, I've stated where I feel on this motion, and I just let you all make whatever vote you feel is needed, but just remember that people are watching.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. There's a motion and a second. I'd like to call the question now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that's 6-2. Is this the motion that addressed...
UDO.
Counselor, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm almost done. We do believe that there's a need for applicants in large and/or impactful rezoning cases to work with the residents in the area where the proposed project will be located in a forum other than the planning commission or city council hearings. The neighborhood meeting requirement in UDO Section 10.2.4.D helps with the initial application, but I also think that another meeting of this type later in the rezoning process would give the parties an additional opportunity to work together to resolve any potential differences before the planning commission and council vote on the case. I would therefore move that council authorize the planning staff and city attorney to draft a UDO amendment that would add another neighborhood meeting to the rezoning process to be held before the planning commission hearing for larger and more impactful projects, and with, and which also defines the threshold for the cases that would require this additional meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
What's the timeframe? Because normally, text changes take about three months. That's fast-tracked, so...
Yeah, we would ask for a fast-track, but I think that it's kind of relying on staff to give us an honest estimate. I would assume, and it's bad to assume, but would think they've thought at some point about ways to, what other meetings would look like, or have, I mean, I've even looked at other cities and their process. So we would ask them to expedite this, knowing that this would be super helpful for the community at large, but also know that we've thrown a lot at them since December 3rd. So I think that that is the, we're sending the request and that asking for expediting So I think that that is, we're sending the request and asking for expedited service on this issue, but, you know, we can ask for a realistic timeline from them.
So we have a forty-five day window for anything that is currently pending. So what this would do is help fill that void, and we would do it as expeditiously as possible. So anything going forward will follow these new rules. Correct? City Attorney?
Yes. And I probably, getting it drafted, we have a lot of drafting going on, but I think we can move it to the top. I guess the question is, what would be the next slot at the Planning Commission that would be available? Because it has to go to the Planning Commission first, and so I'm looking at them.
They're conversing.
Two weeks?
I think I can see. Do it again.
I don't have my glasses.
Yeah. But, and then it would depend on, you know, how fast of a turnaround from the Planning Commission. We have had a recent text change where we actually noticed it before, for council, before it went to the Planning Commission, which expedited it some as well.
Wanted to meet this?
And when are those, though?
Second and fourth Tuesday.
Second and fourth, so that would be the second meeting in February and the first meeting in March at the latest, second and fourth of March? Stand up here.
So Planning Commission meets the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. We're probably pushing it for the next meeting on February 11th, so it could potentially come up on the 25th of February or the 10th of March at Planning Commission.
So that would put it back here at the latest, the second meeting in March?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. So is that forty-five days away? That's not leaving too big of a gap, I don't think.
And this is, just to be clear, this is adding an additional step.
An expanding notification? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, that's the request. So this is, everything else stays the same, how we already do the existing outreach, what's in the UDO stays the same. This is increasing that request.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. That's six-two. You have another?
It's, this is it. I can write more if you want, but I think people want to go home. Motion four. "Finally, I would move that council instruct the Planning Commission to continue hearing rezoning cases and making recommendations to council in those cases as state law and the UDO require, and that no case be delayed for reasons outside the current UDO process. Specifically, that we make it clear that the Planning Commission should not ask council to extend the time it has to consider any case in anticipation of a CAC vote or new UDO provisions, which could add an additional neighborhood meeting in the future."
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? That seems pretty cut and dry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Hopefully, we don't have any more.
Got a comment?
No, that's it. Did Mr. Knight, oh.
You got a comment.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
I was going to mention this or comment after motion two, but I decided to wait to see the, all the motions, and I think taking them in full, the four motions in full does help explain what Counselor Martin is trying to do, and I think it's similar to what a lot of us talked about since the last summer. It goes way beyond, and I hope we don't get caught up on the, on the status, the new status of the CACs, because this goes way beyond this. It's trying to better civic engagement in the city of Raleigh, and I think we all, at least I for one, think there's a need for that. To just quote again the motion, more to ensure an inclusionary participatory democracy in which the residents have multiple opportunities to engage as partners and co-creators of the future of our city. So I think that's very important to keep in mind, and I think we need to think about that as we move through this process. And as we talked about, it's going to be a participatory process. I think it goes without saying that leaders of the RCAC will be involved, is my hope that they will be. And so I think we need to focus on this opportunity and effort that we have before us to make the city a greater, more inclusive, more participatory place, and I'm looking forward to taking part in that effort. Thank you.
I have, I'm not used to my glasses yet, as you can see. I just have one comment about this. You know, when I, we have twelve people who are currently in housing in neighborhoods who work with CACs, and I'm going to be looking for them to fill the gap. This is what they do, is outreach. And when I think about, like, seniors who are isolated, or members of our LGBT community who are sleeping in tents because they can't find housing or they're afraid. When I think about, I was going to a Super Bowl party the other night, and this young man walked up to me and said, "Mayor," he's about twelve years old, he said, "You know, old people are making decisions for all us young people. You know, what about a stronger youth council?" I was really encouraged to see the Youth Summit. I mean, more outreach to our youth, more outreach to renters, more outreach to our Hispanic and Latino community who feel left out completely. I think this is an incredible opportunity to reach out to our low-income residents, also reach out to people who are victims of predatory developers. There are so many things we can do, and I like your vision of being a national model. Change, a friend of mine always says, "Change is good, transition is difficult." That's not exactly what she says, but that's, I think, where we are. And Counselor Martin, I want to commend you for bringing something forward that really embraces the spirit of inclusion and creating a Raleigh for all, because that's what we said we wanted to do. So thank you.
Yes. Though I voted against three of the motions, my goal is to make sure that everyone's voice is heard, so I'm going to do everything I can in my power to make this the best we can. But, you know, I think I clearly stated that, you know, I think we've created a void.
And I thank my fellow council members for their support. I know that there will be frustration from people that have given the CACs a lot of their time, and I think that what is to be built will require all of us kind of coming together, and I hope that we can do that in the days and weeks ahead. But I think that this sets an exciting precedent for the city, and for the many reasons in the communities that the mayor laid out when she just spoke, there's a lot of people missing in the conversations that we have. And if we truly think about who isn't at the table so often, it's overwhelming, and the votes that we just took are in honor of that. So I thank you all.
Thank you. We will now go to appointments, starting with the Appearance Commission.
Appearance Commission, you have two vacancy. Will Gaskins received eight votes, so would be appointed, leaving one vacancy. Civil Service Commission, you have one vacancy. Mayor Baldwin has nominated Patricia L. Holland.
Yes.
Historic Cemeteries Advisory Board, two vacancies, no nominations. Raleigh Convention and Performing Arts Center Authority, one vacancy. Leon Menjus received eight votes, so would be appointed. Raleigh Transit Authority, one alternate member vacancy. Councilmember Stewart's nominated Sarah Pedro.
Sorry, Prado, P-R-A-D-O.
Prado. Sister City Vacancy, Cory Charlin received eight votes, so would be appointed.
Cody. Cody. Cody Charlin.
Yes, Cody. Thank you. I need Robin and the mayor's glasses. Okay, the next nominations, the Human Relations Commission, you have one vac, excuse me, the term of Melissa Bixler is expiring, and she does not wish to be considered for reappointment.
I nominate Tori Dixon, and fellow council members should have a copy of his resume and my nomination form on their desks.
All right. The next is the Substance Use Advisory Commission, you have one vacancy. A letter of resignation has been received from Scott, Louisiana. Therefore, there's one vacancy for consideration, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a report and recommendation of the city attorney.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. The first is, during the January 7th, council member, you had asked our office to come back with some recommendations about a study group to consider and make recommendations about council terms, council compensation, and voter engagement and participation based on some, a group of individuals who had come and asked some questions during the public comment period. We have taken a look about that and have a couple of suggestions for council to consider. The first relates to what kind of a study group composition you might want, and I think that's up to council, but we think probably a manageable odd number, such as seven, might be a good idea, and that council could do the appointments the same way that they do appointments for other boards and commissions. If there are particular qualities that you wanted, you could spell that out or just evaluate the applications as they come in. We would think that an application would be a good idea, just to make sure if you want city, probably residents, to be members of that committee. With respect to the individual, and the other thing is, our office could be available and other city staff that you wanted to assist with that study group. The other specific questions that were asked were, could you extend council member terms from two years to four years? And the answer to that is yes. There is a process in the general statutes under 160A 101 that allows council to do that without any permission or further intervention by the General Assembly. I'm not going to go through the statutes laid out. There are a number of steps that the council would go through. So we could provide that information to the study group, and I guess the study group could consider the pros and cons of that extension of term and report back to the council. The second question was, could there be a review of council compensation with a goal of expanding opportunities for more people to seek elective office? What we have done is reached out to the HR department, and they can and are willing to compile a report, collecting information from other municipalities or comparable governments to find out what those council members make, and to provide that information to the study group to make recommendations back. The final question had to do with proposals to increase voter information, engagement, and turnout. And I've talked to a few people who have a lot of expertise in this area, and that's a tough question, but it is one that the study group could consider, and there are people who do have expertise at the Board of Elections and the School of Government that we could put in touch with the study group, that could provide them with ideas, and hopefully, they could consider those people's knowledge and background and review and bring recommendations back. So that is my report on that, and if the council wanted to move forward with that, there could be a motion, or if you want to change everything I said and do something different, you can do that as well.
No, I think you captured it well, what the group had brought forward. Let me ask you, who would the, who would be the staff contact for this? It would be run out of the city attorney's office, I'm assuming.
We're glad to do it with the help of whoever the city manager might want to put with us. I think there are some legal questions that we can sort of provide information, statutory processes and things like that, that it would be, we're glad to assist with, and anybody else, that anybody else thinks is needed is certainly okay with us.
Okay. Well, they came before us, asked, that's the response. I'm going to make a motion to approve. Any second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Robin. That's very, very helpful.
Okay. I have one more thing, that's kind of two things. Also, on January 7th, when council adopted the new procedures for public comment and rules of decorum, Councilmember Melton asked our office to look at the city code and the UDO to find out if there were amendments to those particular ordinances that were needed to make them consistent with the new procedures. So we have done that as well, and they're broken into two pieces, basically. The first one is the city code, which, right now, has provisions that were enacted in 1959, actually. So it would be our recommendation that, we have been through those, all of those provisions. Some of them are inconsistent with the rules of decorum, some of them are inconsistent with the general statutes, some of those are inconsistent with city council practice. And so we would propose bringing those back at the next meeting with the Black Line to tell you exactly where those are. I'll give you a couple of examples. One thing is you want to change the name to public comment. There are general statutes that now govern how you notice things like special meetings, and those are not consistent with what we have in our code from 1969, so it's sort of a cleanup job. One of the other things was to make things so that their references are gender-neutral, and just a couple, it's really just a lot of, you know, small cleanup things that we think that we can bring back at the next meeting pretty easily.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move to direct the city attorney to prepare a text change for city council consideration to amend the city code to reflect the new rules of decorum and current city and council practices as recommended by the city attorney's office.
Second? Who seconded?
One more, unless...
You want to do it all?
I haven't called for a vote yet.
Oh.
Let's vote on this one.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay. This, I didn't know if you were encompassing, there is some, another UDO amendment that we would recommend, and right now, under the UDO, in order for a member of the public to ask for a text amendment to the UDO, they're required to ask council permission or authorization. That's not a state law, it's a city code requirement, and it has been there for quite a while. Now, the way that we've done this forever, as long as I can remember, is the request has been made during what was previously the petition and request of citizens. We think that with the change in procedure, this is something that unequivocally every time needs council action, and probably unequivocally every time needs some staff background for guidance. So we would suggest that it be moved to a different part of the meeting and perhaps a different process, and I want to break that down pretty quickly. There are two types of text amendments. One is a change to the UDO itself, which is either the language of the UDO or an NCOD. Now, those are always very specific to UDO language. Our suggestion would be to move that to perhaps the special items part of the agenda. Then, when the request is made, the staff can analyze it, prepare a report, and you don't have to wait to be surprised when they come to public comment, because we wouldn't have had the opportunity under the new procedures to go through that. So that would be our recommendation there. Now, there are a handful of those a year, there are not a lot. Now, the other type of text amendment is a text amendment to a zoning condition. Now, up until about a year ago, those were processed the same as any other rezoning. They would go through the staff because they're property-specific, they involve the negotiation of conditions with neighbors and others, they look and smell exactly like a zoning case. But what happened was, there was a case from the Court of Appeals that said, "Well, we don't really want to put them in the rezoning bucket because they don't change the name of the district." That's a map amendment. They look, they're changing the language, so it looks more like a text amendment. However, we have gotten to where these are pretty common. We always end up, it sometimes gets confusing. So our suggestion, one suggestion, would be that you go back and treat them exactly as you treat... as you treated them before this Court of Appeals case, but say that you require every step in a rezoning case for this type of text amendment. That means you'd have to have a neighborhood meeting, now probably two neighborhood meetings. Go to Planning Commission, do the mailings. And that really more accurately fits what you're doing with a text amendment to a zoning condition than a general citywide one. So that's one recommendation. The text amendments to zoning conditions go through staff as a rezoning and the remaining ones go to special items. Now, the alternative is that you just move all of them to special items and that's up to the council. Did you follow that? And you can make a motion for either one and we can get that done pretty quick, too.
I'm going to leave this to the lawyers and the council.
I move approval as staff's recommendation.
Recommendation one.
Yes.
So that would be.
Not the alternative.
Right. So then I move to modify the process by which members of the public submit zoning text changes to the city council and ask the city attorney and planning staff to prepare the appropriate text changes and to take those forward to the next steps, whether that be to the Planning Commission or the city council. Specifically, to amend the process as follows. A, text changes to the UDO itself, including NCOD text changes, will be moved to the special items portion of the agenda. Those applications will be submitted to staff before the meeting and a report will be presented before council's vote on whether to authorize the text change. And B, text changes to rezoning conditions which do not change the underlying zoning district, also known as text changes to zoning conditions, will be processed the same as rezonings under the UDO and will follow that process without prior authorization from the council.
So that will avoid, that will avoid the situation that we had, what was it, at the January earlier meeting where people were standing in line talking about a proposed text change?
The other thing I forgot to mention is that hits sort of a couple of things we've been asked to do. We had another charge to change the UDO, to go through procedures that were maybe adding additional steps that weren't needed and to maybe have a way to clean up the council agenda and streamline it. And I think this particular changes would hit both of those things as well as, you know, making that process work better as opposed to being used in the public comment part.
Okay.
She seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Eight-zero. Now we have the report and recommendation, city clerk?
The first thing, if you would please, all of you that were reading motions so fast, would you send them to me? That would help me immensely. Second, you have a couple of sets of minutes, the January 21 work session and regular session for consideration of approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
That's all.
All right. We have no closed session today?
No, no closed session, correct.
Okay. With that, we adjourn. Thank you. I just want everybody to know, we have a very full agenda tonight. We have 11 public hearings.